All right, fine. You got your life savings in there or something?
Just the city.
Oh, I'm gonna need that though. What'd you cook? Yeah, well, that's good enough. How are you?
Well.
It's so awful.
I can't do it all.
Right, we will call the City Council Committee of the Whole for the Belvidere City Council to order for March 13th, 2023. And the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
Okay. We have several individuals that have registered for public comment this evening. I'm gonna just start with the order I got 'em in. We have Brandy Rennies, is that right? Br- Reames, I'm sorry. Could you come up? If you want to come up here and in front of the microphone and just give your name and... Welcome.
Brandy Reames, I'm here for Jen Gorden, owner of Jack Rose. And she would like to talk about the Sidewalk Cafe proposal. So she wrote a letter, I'm just here to read that. "To the City of Belvidere and the Board Members, I'd like to express my concerns and opinions relative to the upcoming discussion of the cafe seating being accepted into the City of Belvidere. I'm hoping that the opposition that was displayed last year has since changed its opinion due to no negative incidences having occurred since being allowed in 2019. Since ordinance was modified in 2019 due to the COVID pandemic, there's been no negative incidences. In contrast, it has become very valued by the residents of Boone County and surrounding communities as an opportunity to come into this city and enjoy the nice weather outdoors. I believe that people are drawn to the Belvidere community as a place where they can in fact wine and dine outside. There are still those that continue to be guarded about COVID and this provides them with a destination that they feel comfortable in. The original ordinance provides that the establishment gain 50% or more of its revenue from food is absurd. Jack Rose does not have the physical space to operate a kitchen, however, it does freely share menus of neighborhood food establishments, some that also serve alcohol, others that do not. For those restaurants that do not provide alcohol, this provides a significant number of additional sales. As the owner of Jack Rose, I can attest that our garbage cans are equally filled with containers from local businesses as our own. We may not actually serve the food, but we certainly provide an outlet for our neighboring food establishments to earn business. Jack Rose has been an active participant in the Buchanan Street strolls with sponsorship, providing additional seating during the events. Once again, it is the allure of being outside in the nice weather that makes such events a success. This is a tremendous amount of work for both the city and my team as well as the other establishments in the Buchanan Street area. I do feel that it is work that has been very well received by the residents and the neighboring communities, and it is well worth the effort. Let's not go in reverse. I urged those opposed to changing the ordinances about the 50% alcohol rule due to their continuance concerns to contact me so I can address them. I was never contacted by anybody, so I draw a conclusion that in fact there were no concerns or issues. I am not taking this lightly that a changing the ordinance should be taken lightly. However, when an ordinance has exhausted its timeline or purpose and is no longer a benefit to the community, but instead a hindrance, it is time for a change. I could liken this to the expansion of the video gaming licenses. When in 2018, I had applied for a video gaming license and there was availability of 21, and that number has since blossomed to over 40. Was that a significant benefit to the community at large? The lack of outdoor seating will have a negative impact on the business of Jack Rose and neighborhood businesses. With a track record of zero instances since the beginning, when this was first allowed in late spring of 2019, I would hope that we can look at the benefits of allowing the cafe seating and continue to build the businesses in downtown Belvidere. There are so many exciting things coming, please let's not go in reverse. Jen is out of the country right now and she has left her information. If anyone liked to contact her with her phone number or her email. Thank you.
All right. And we have John Albertini here tonight. John, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Albertini. I live at 506 Park Avenue in Belvidere, Illinois, in the county of Boone. I just wanted to say that I've been coming here almost every Monday for the last 18 months to learn about the City Council, how it works, what goes on. I probably have a better attendance record than any of the aldermen here, but that's okay. Anyways, I feel that I've learned a lot. I feel that I've learned how to be an alderman. With that being said, I'll be running for First Ward Alderman in the City of Belvidere. I just wanted to address this to the people at home that are viewing that there's early voting started today. Please get out and vote. April 4th is the main election. Please get out and vote regardless of how you're gonna vote or for who. It's your duty to get out and vote, so please do so. I think everyone here that's running for office would appreciate it. Again, I thank the City Council, I thank the people at home, and I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next, we have John Wolfe. John? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm John Wolfe, retired Belvidere auto dealer, and currently represent you on the Northern Illinois Land Bank Board. My understanding is that the City Council is recommending a 63.5% decrease in funding to Growth Dimensions to $20,000 in this year's budget. When you consider Belvidere and Boone County's representation in the current and future economic developments in our region, I find this reduction to be alarming and misguided, especially in light of the funding currently being done by the City of Rockford to the R A E D C, which in my research found to be $153,000. In my business life, I've found that in times of the greatest economic uncertainties, rationalness in actions tend to create much more harm than good. In light of the economic developments in Boone County and Belvidere undertaken just last year, Belvidere has positive momentum. Now is not the time to reduce your funding by 63.5%. At $55,000 yearly, the City of Belvidere is approximately 17% of Growth Dimensions' budget. However, in my opinion, you receive probably 80% of the work and benefits provided by this organization. The city could not possibly hire one single person to promote its economic development for the amount of that salary. Many of you are in business or are employed by a business. If your business reduced funding by that percentage, you could probably expect a reduction in services by a like percentage. Staff reductions cut to every part of the organization. The City of Belvidere and this City Council is looked to by the private businesses that also fund Growth Dimensions. Your leadership is essential to our community and to our county. A reduction of this magnitude sends a message to every other investor to Growth Dimensions, a very negative message. Growth Dimensions administers the Belvidere Enterprise Zone. Last year was the most productive in many years. Rock Valley College's location of their advanced technology center in Belvidere most likely would not have been accomplished without the help and assistance of Growth Dimensions staff and board members. There are businesses in Belvidere that want to expand, to invest in their facilities, to grow. I'd ask every one of you to allow Growth Dimensions the opportunity to assist those efforts with its current staff and three. Without your support and funding, I fear this business called Growth Dimensions will not be able to continue to support Belvidere in the manner that you all have come to expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. Next, we have Joan Sage. Hi, Joan. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It is a pleasure to come before this group, it always is. But today is not a happy day in terms of what I have to ask you for. What Mr. Wolfe just spoke about is a really important and critical thing. Growth Dimensions has been around here for many years, at least 30, I believe. When I am wearing a couple of hats today. I work for Comcast and we have invested, as many other businesses have. Our most recent was on Moreheim Drive. We invested over $200,000. The beauty of Growth Dimensions is that it is a public-private partnership. Businesses support, as Mr. Wolfe has said. The city has been a very good partner. We really need that to continue to happen. At times like this, when we've had the announcement that we've had, it's even more critical for us to invest. This is not a time to pull back. Growth Dimensions has proven itself to be worthy of the money. They are using your dollars very, very well. And it would be very difficult to hire one person for the amount that you are currently paying now. And to reduce it, the way you're looking is just, it's not a good business decision. It's not a good government decision. I implore you to please make sure that you fund Growth Dimensions at least to the level that you are. If you could increase it, that would be even better. I know these are tough times, but we're looking at many good investments. If you look at what Growth Dimensions has done, and please do take a very serious look to see what they have done, and the return on the investment is phenomenal. So I appreciate you really thinking about this. In my role with Comcast, I do government affairs and we work with many economic development organizations. This organization is doing wonderful things. You have a small group that is mighty. They do good work. And if you look at just even for what is going on with Pillsbury Green Giant, that whole expansion there, that was more than two years of dedicated, dedicated. What Pamela has done, she gives her cellphone number to these folks. They can call her at any time in the day or night and they do that. They call her up and she answers the phone. That kind of dedication and commitment is really important. So thank you all for what you've done already. Please continue to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sage. And last, I think, not least, Pam Fettis with Growth Dimensions is here. Pam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate your time this evening. I've heard many times over the course of this year that Growth Dimensions have been doing a valuable job in providing a significant impact to Belvidere. So tonight, I really want to focus on the numbers and talk about the numbers. Growth Dimensions is a nonprofit organization. We market economic development in Belvidere as a public-private partnership. With the proposed 64% reduction towards economic development from the City of Belvidere, this would equate to public sector's contributions estimated at 37% of investments and approximately 20% of our overall budget. Growth Dimensions estimates we spend an average of $85,000 per year towards managing the Enterprise Zone program. This average return we see from fees are $25,000 per year. A large amount of funding the city receives to expand water and sewer requires an economic development project. An example of the ex- is it example, I'm sorry, an example of the expansion in the water and sewer to Irene Road and the realignment of Irene Road. Since 2016, Belvidere has seen $124,757,000 in increase in assessed property values from industrial and commercial projects. The Belvidere Assembly Plant will continue to add to the property value even while it's on idle. The project's plan for development did not happen overnight. It took years of marketing, relationship building, and collaborating. It would be a shame to see the interruptions or the momentum with this request. With this reduction, Belvidere City Council members will have a tougher decision in the future. I might not be here, you might not be here, but it'll be a tough decision that the council members will have in the future for the likelihood of a levy, increased taxes, or increase in fees are very possible without the economic growth. We ask you not just to look at today, but look at the future for Belvidere. There's a wise saying that I'd like to leave with you here tonight. Says, "Don't hold the nickels too close to your eyes that you see the dollars passing you by." I want you to think about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fettis. I believe that's all we have for public comment this evening. We don't have any public forum tonight. Okay, thank you. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Building, planning, zoning, and unfinished business, we have none. Building, planning, zoning, new business. Building department update. Kip, Mr. Countryman isn't with us this evening, but I think Gina is gonna help us out, so... Gina?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the commercial project end, Murphy's Oil is expected to start in April. I believe that was discussed previously. I actually communicated with Taco Bell today. They were not happy with the bids that they got, so they're gonna be possibly revamping their site plan to reduce some costs there. So that could delay their groundbreaking. At the dispensary, the walls and roofs are up. Truck stop walls and roof are up. Dairy Queen, the walls are going up. Project Kelly, the walls are growing up, going up. Walmart submitted a revised site plan for their new pickup addition that they started reviewing last year. So I think Belvidere's gonna have to hang a sign that says, "Please excuse our dust with all the groundbreakings going on lately." RVC submitted plans to convert part of their parking lot that's not used right now into a semi-trailer driving class area. Kinda like when you go to Pacemaker, they got the motorcycle area. They'll do that for trucks to help with CDL training, especially with all the distribution centers going up. There's gonna be a demand for CDL drivers. Belvidere Slots, which is the one on South State Street in between the Blood Bank and the Dollar Tree, that got finalized and I believe their video gaming permit was issued today. And then on the residential end, it is interesting, although the residential developers are kind of cautious right now. This, last week and this week, we've had two individual homeowners come into the office quite a bit because they intend on building houses with their own private contractors. So although the developers are cautious, the individuals are still moving forward.
Thank you, Gina. And does anybody have any questions for Gina? Other woman, Frank?
Okay, Gina, I saw today at the old Family Did Video. Are they coming along as well? Because I saw a truck there.
Yes, that building permit was issued for the interior remodel. So they are moving forward with gutting the inside and remodeling that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Del Rose before we move on to her next hit? Okay? Hearing none, thank you, Gina. And then we have planning and zoning department update, and that would be Gina.
Yep. Me again. There are four cases on the public hearing for tomorrow. Gunstein's Car Wash on North State Street is moving forward again. Maggio's Pizza and Rosati's both want video gaming and a text amendment to clean up some language. I don't have anything for April yet, but I will say I've had quite a bit of meetings with developers and potential applicants. So if nothing comes in for April, I do expect May to be a busy month for public hearings. Site plans would be just the Dunkin' Donuts, Gary's Flooring. Those are ongoing projects. Zoning letters are staying pretty consistent. Historic Preservation, they have their Benefits Night at Maggio's. They also discussed doing some community outreach, newspaper articles, presenting to the Board of Realtors and other agencies in town about what it means to be landmarked, to dispel some myths. So they are getting their calendar for the year going. Heritage Days Planning has started. It's gonna look a little different this year. We're being very conscious of our budget, but we are going to do our best to bring everything that, all the events coming back. And I discussed presenting at the high school and we did have a booth at the Chili Cookoff. I believe we were robbed out of best booths, but that is my opinion. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Gina. Any questions for Gina regarding any of that information she shared with you tonight? All right. Thank you, Gina. Item C, we have on the agenda Resolution 2023-5, that being a resolution directing the planning department to publish the zoning map of the City of Belvidere. And you can see the attached behind it would be the Exhibit A, which categorizes the zoning in there. Gina, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to add?
Basically, per state law, we have to officially have the map every March. So this is just doing that. The only changes from last year's map would be the Kelly Farms Annexation, Belvidere Retail Annexation, the One Lot related to Project Yukon, and the rezoning of the One Lot the library owns.
Okay. With that being said, could I get a motion for Resolution 2023-5? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion, any questions, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Please signify, actually will say aye when their name is called. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And under Public Works unfinished business, Mr. Anderson? You don't have any this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. And Public Works new business update, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, honor. In your packets for information only, there was a water sewer rate survey. Just bringing everybody's attention. It was referenced when we talked about and initiated their sanitary sewer rate increase. So if you want to make a note on that form when this was done, we had not approved that rate increase. So our average monthly bill of $38.72 will now be $41.13 if you factor in that rate increase. But just like to mention that the overall average of the 16 facilities that returned responses this time around to the City of Genoa's rate survey, the average monthly bill is $72.53. And like I said, our new revised one is $41.13. So we're the lowest out of the 16 that were surveyed for both water and sewer combined. And we're quite a bit below that average. So, which is a very good thing, especially when we're marketing for industrial-type development. So we need to get the word out, so we get a bit water user, like a bottling plant or new Pepsi or Coke facility would be wonderful. But the other thing I have on your desk tonight, there is a trifold. It's that time again, we are required periodically to do cross-connection surveys by the Illinois EPA and our time is due for another one. These will be going out mailed to all of our users, industrial, commercial, residential, the like. You can, there's options to fill it out and complete it. It's a short little survey. If you open it up, it's pretty short and direct. You can do it online through the city's website as far as the return. You can self-postage-paid little return card. You can put them in the mail. You can certainly come in to City Hall and drop them off. Or you can even fax it as well. So there's all those different options to return it. We need to get compliance. We're supposed to get, according to EPA, we're supposed to get 100% compliance, but we get as best we can. It's available online now to complete at the city's website and these will be going out postage. We're working out the final details with the post office for the dollar amounts, but it looks like probably around the 1st of April, the end of March, 1st of April, these will be going out to everybody. So if you get any phone calls or anything, that's what it's in reference to. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments to Brent? The only thing, Brent, that I would add is with this water sewer rate survey, when you look at it, we are by far the lowest water sewer rate provider here for what we bill. But you had covered that with the rates regarding nearly half of what some of these are. However, I think it is important to point out that we have not had any kind of an increase at all for, since 2011, I believe. And that's been, that's a long time. As with anything, we certainly understand with inflation this year alone, but when you look at it year after year, we have not had to do that. We do have some unknowns as well, with Stalantis being what at one time was our largest user. And as you had pointed out, it sounds, I guess, a little bit strange, but consumption works on our side. but consumption works on our side. Uh, water is one of the things that we have that, uh, is good that we market it. So, uh, we're in a great position for that, uh, and, uh, but this may not be, uh, the only time we're looking at it, depending on what the future holds, so.
Correct. As you recall, we're gonna take a look at halfway through the budget, uh, upcoming fiscal year, six months, and see where we're at with, uh, make any more recommendations at that time. And I forgot, uh, one more thing, item to, to price counsel on. We have submitted, um, for earmark projects, uh, through our state legislators and federal legislators, uh, through Senator Durbin's office, we've submitted an earmark for, um, what I'll call Phase One of the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Relief Project, which will include the detention facility, uh, from the property that we, we acquired, um, from Franklin Wire, which will include the, uh, pipe that goes underneath railroad tracks, underneath the locusts, and the, and the discharge point to the river. Uh, that application was filed today. Uh, we, uh, will also be filing by, uh, this Friday for the drilling well number, uh, New Well eleven drilling portion of that project, um, for a separate earmark. And then we are also in conjunction with Four Rivers Sanitary Sewer Authority, uh, submitting an earmark for the trunk sanitary sewer line extension, uh, to service the Irene Road interchange with the new lift station in Cherry Valley connecting to Four Rivers. Uh, so all three of those projects were submitted either last week, this week, or next week. And those are all grant projects with a local match, uh, that we've included, uh, as part of the budget.
So I think, uh, as a reminder to the council, when we had, uh, had individuals come to the council, and they had asked us, uh, for relief with, uh, storm, uh, water, um, you know, flooding, what have you, uh, the city council had passed on a forty-six million dollar investment over basically forever. And, uh, but at that time, we did discuss what options that we have moving forward, and we'd put priorities on where we should start. Obviously, we should start at the, uh, river, because anything that comes subsequent then will certainly prepare us, uh, by starting there. So we'll be able to relieve that with, uh, the, uh, storage, uh, that, uh, we have at the Franklin facility, and then at the, uh, pipes that go underneath Locust and go to the river, that's the starting point. It's not cheap, uh, but it is a start, and, uh, we promised them that, uh, we wouldn't stand by and do nothing. I think this is probably a good start. It will require matching funds, and as the other two projects that Brent, uh, had mentioned. But I think anytime you can get a potential eighty percent, uh, return on a twenty percent investment, uh, I think that's pretty prudent, and, uh, but it is expensive, and it all costs money. Uh, also, before we get off of the subject of, uh, the water, um, I think it's important to note, uh, that it's eight cents a day. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's important to note. So over the last eleven years, our rates would have went up, uh, eight cents a day. Uh, so I think we've put that into perspective. It's not very often that you see that, so. Okay. Brent, did you have anything else?
That'll do it.
Any questions for Brent, uh, regarding any of that? All right, thank you. And other, other. Five, under five other, we have Item A, uh, the Sidewalk Cafe Ordinance. Um, there's a memo in your packet dated March ninth from Attorney Drella to all of us. And, um, I think, uh, here we are again. I know we seem to address this every year. We had Brandy, uh, speak, uh, regarding that. Uh, but, um, the information that you have in front of you, um, will allow you to proceed according to what you think is in the best interest of the community. So I would open up the floor. Any discussion regarding that? Uh, okay. And when you say approved, do you mean approve for this year, or do you mean approve as a permanent?
So when you're, no, the, the, the council in the past has considered possible permanent, but it's always made a year-by-year temporary basis. So the ordinance drafted that's attached to memo is a one-year, basically redo of the last couple of years. Um, so if you want it to be a permanent change, you'd have to make that motion, I'd draft that for, uh, next Monday. If you wanna just leave it as another one year, you can simply, uh, make a motion to approve the ordinance as prepared.
Well, first we need to approve it as it is, and then, and then we can make an amendment.
No. You can, you can make a motion to, uh, remove, to allow alcohol sales without the fifty percent reduction moving forward, and I'll draft the appropriate ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and a third. Um, regarding, uh, the ordinance, uh, four ninety-six H. And, uh, so I know that there's gonna be some discussion on this, and, uh, so the floor is open. Uh, Alderwoman Frank, and then Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question, um, we rehash this every year, but, um, is this just Buchanan Street?
No, this is citywide.
Citywide?
Now, keep in mind, there's not too many locations where it actually work.
Okay, well, I'm, okay, that's what I'm gonna get to. Um, South State, it's in my ward, um, there's been a beer bottle in the street for probably six weeks. I, I mean, I don't know what, how they get out the front door with a beer bottle. I just, I just don't like that.
Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with all respect to the person who spoke here, Brandy, um, I would personally like to see it go back to the fifty percent rule of the food, but now I would be okay with, if they had some agreement with local restaurants, uh, to serve food, uh, I'd be fine with that. Not necessarily them serve the food themselves, but it would, of course, need to be documented somehow. And the reason being is that the whole idea of a sidewalk cafe, cafe means food, basically, and it's meant to be a place where people get together with families. And of course, if alcohol is the only thing that's served, then it's not gonna be a family-type affair, you know? You go to some of these cities, like in Wisconsin and such, there's, there are cities that are tourist places where people wanna go and visit and that type of thing. You see these cafes, and they're all basically restaurants that, um, you know, they do serve alcohol, but they also serve food, and the whole idea is to have families sitting together outside, enjoying the, uh, outdoors and that type of thing, so. Uh, but again, I can understand the situation where they don't have the, um, facilities to serve food, but if they do have an agreement with, um, another local restaurants and such to bring food in, you know, that would be good, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you both. Uh, Alderwoman Moha?
Thank you. Um, in regards to what Alderman Porter said, um, I don't know that there's anything in writing, but I know that all of the facilities in Buchanan Street, um, allow you to order food from any restaurant in Belvidere or wherever, and eat it at their sidewalk, in their bar. So they are very friendly, um, to that. So I think, um, the fifty percent food sales, even though it's not coming right from that, it, it, you know, it can be met, because they're allowing other restaurants the opportunity to, uh, have their food in other establishments.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Snow?
So previously, I was always apprehensive of the, um, alcohol in the, um, public right of way. Um, but it appears that with the current clientele that the, they draw in, that it's not been a problem unless the police chief can tell us otherwise, um, barring the beer bottle that's been sitting out forever, which is an isolated incident, I would imagine, unless you've got a whole bunch. Um, and I would be in, obviously, I made the motion, but I was in favor of, um, moving forward with this, and I wasn't always a big fan of it.
All right. Uh, Chief, did, uh, would you like to comment? Do you have some information?
Uh, I just figured I would weigh in, uh, based off of, uh, my research. I anticipated the question this evening, uh, and, uh, I wasn't able to locate any, uh, either disorderlies or fights associated with the, uh, sidewalk cafes for the, since the, uh, the ordinance went into effect. So just thought I would share that.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, city attorney? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up there. Alderwoman Prather?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, um, Wendy, in response to your comment, somebody chucked a Fireball bottle in my front yard the other day, and I don't even have a bar or anything in my neighborhood. Um, so I picked it up and I threw it away. Um, besides that, we're assuming that the people and the clientele that go to these establishments are just going there to get absolutely hammered and to cause all kinds of ruckus. I enjoy getting away from my children. I enjoy going out with a girlfriend and having a glass of wine or having a beer. And Chief, you can attest to this. Have you ever had a call on me as far as any kind of a situation?
Do, do you want me to answer that? No, no.
No, but in, in all serious.
I, I don't recall one, no, ma'am.
Thank you. But in all seriousness, it's like, I think we need to guard ourselves against, uh, trying to police and enfor- enforce a certain particular moral code that we might possess in our own rights, but we cannot enforce that on just grown people that wanna go out and enjoy a beverage in the summertime, and they wanna do that on the sidewalk at a table.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Fleury, then Alderwoman Moha, and then Alderman Porter?
Right, and I, I think that, I thank you for coming in tonight and just kind of talking about one establishment, just said you haven't had any problems with this, and, you know, I understand before he has some apprehension, so nice to see that change. But I don't see overall where there's a problem where it has to have food involved to, you know, to be outside, if you wanna have a beer or whatever your decision is. But correct me if I'm wrong, attorney, but if you, same thing, if you were a person who drank sixty-five beers and were acting a fool, this has nothing to do with ordinance. You would be covered by drunken disorderly, and that would be a problem whether you're inside a bar or outside a bar. Is that correct, or police chief, or somebody?
Well, if I drank sixty-five beers, I'd be passed out. That being said, um, obviously, all the usual state and local laws relating to public intoxication, DUI, things like that, applies whatever we do with this.
Right. So the thing is, is that we're not preventing people from being disorderly by letting them be outside. It's not gonna encourage them to be even more full. I would, I would think that people who are outside would be, uh, more aware of their surroundings than probably be on better behavior than when you're inside a bar behind closed wall. So regardless, I think that, I don't think you have to tie food into that to be able to enjoy the outside, as long as you're meeting the requirements, you pay your permits, and do what's right. We've had this now for two and a half years, and it sounds like there's no significant issue from this one business, and nothing from the police chief, so I don't know why we need to keep having this discussion. I would say make it permanent, and if things, if things change in the past, by all means, we can bring it back to council. If all of a sudden we make this permanent, and then the town goes bananas, then we can change that. But I think right now, it makes sense to just make this permanent.
Okay, thank you. Then Alderwoman Moha, I think was next, and?
Thank you. Uh, I just really think we should give our citizens the benefit of the doubt, and I'm really not a fan of making rules, laws, ordinances on what might happen. I think this is really, um, beneficial for downtown.
Okay, thank you. And Alderman Porter?
I just had a quick question then, probably for Attorney Drella. What, what's the difference, and I think we have ordinances on beer gardens, what's the difference between a beer garden and a sidewalk cafe than if it's gonna be alcohol only at a sidewalk cafe?
I'm not sure what you refer to as beer gardens, but for example, the, the, uh, establishment across the street from the Jack Rose has, on their private property, uh, called a beer garden, fully enclosed, and it's their property. A sidewalk cafe is on public property, city sidewalk.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, Alderman Fleury touched on something. So is there gonna be a fee for the permits?
There already is.
Okay.
It's been effectively waived from time. In fact, the first, the first time he adopted this ordinance during COVID, that fee was waived. The last couple of years, I think they've actually reintroduced the fee. Um, I'd ask the mayor to make a quick comment. Uh, the first one, Alderman, um, Porter's concept of BYOF, Bring Your Own Food. Um, first of all, as a state, I pretty much, I think every establishment allows that already. But more importantly, we couldn't enforce that. Even if you adopted that ordinance, the bar could have a relationship with a local eatery, and somebody could come in and just sit down and drink. How do you enforce them to actually call someplace else up and order food? Um, so I don't know that that would actually be feasible. And we could certainly draft into an ordinance, I just don't know that's enforceable. The second aspect actually goes, um, you know, we started out kind of with the ordinance that I introduced, and then the motions essentially to allow sidewalk cafes to serve alcohol, uh, eliminate the fifty percent rule that's currently in the base ordinance. Um, if this passes, as long as the committee's okay with it, I would include some of the other language in what has been the temporary ordinance, specifically relating to naming the city's additional insured on the drapshop liability, which I think we are already anyway. And also to put in the, also the, um, requirements that it be roped off or somehow separated from the rest of the sidewalk, um, which is not in the base ordinance, so I'd include that as well for your first reading. Um, what nobody's asked yet is how late do we allow it? And current ordinance is nine P M.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Drella? Uh, anybody else, uh, have any questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor then, and it's my understanding that that motion regard, uh, to adopt, uh, is to modify ordinance four ninety-six H with instructions to, um, uh, remove any fifty percent, uh, sale of food, uh, from the revenue consumption?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that, that reference you're making to the ordinance is actually the previous temporary ordinance. It'd actually be a motion to amend Section ninety-eight dash twelve A three to allow alcohol sales at sidewalk cafes regardless of food being offered for sale, with, uh, the accompanying recommendation of the city attorney relating to, um, fencing of the, uh, of the service areas and, um, and the removal of tables and chairs and things like that, to make sure that the wind does not blow them away.
Okay. So in the ordinance then, under Section seven is what you're referencing? Uh, Se- Section ninety-eight, twelve A three, is that right?
It'd be Sections eight. Well, it, you actually, that's not the current code. That was the, the posed ordinance. So you're actually looking at the wrong thing. The motion to amend ninety-eight.
That's all I've got to look at.
Right. It's a motion, the motion to amend ninety-eight, Section ninety-eight dash twelve A three to allow alcohol sales regardless of the service of food.
Okay. And does this also then have, uh, the caveat with, uh, rather than a one year, that this is, would be permanent unless, uh, there are any issues?
That motion would make it permanent.
Okay. Okay. We're all in agreement? All righty. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, like, if there's a problem, um, and we've already made this permanent, is there something that we can do about it, or we just have to go with it?
What do you mean, what do you mean by a problem?
Like, if, if we have one establishment that has a problem, do we address that, or is it because we've already approved it, and we've enclosed the permanent, and, um, they don't have to have food?
Well, when you say a problem, I don't know what you mean by that, but if you're talking about, let's say, one establishment has repeated calls for service with rowdy patrons outside, um, obviously, the patrons will be dealt with by the police, uh, in appropriate manner through rather disorderly conduct charges, what have you, or, uh, public intoxication. Um, obviously, the city always has the right to revoke the sidewalk cafe permit for that establishment without affecting the other establishments.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because before, when it was through, uh, with COVID, didn't we do it as a temporary thing?
It was temporary before everybody in the, every establishment in the city.
Right. Okay.
Alderman Snow, and, uh, Chief Woody, I see your hand.
And so along those same lines of, uh, information, the mayor is the, um, keeper of the liquor license. Um, he's in charge of enforcement, as it were. And if there's an issue or a problem, he can revoke and/or suspend their license for a period of time as needed to push it even further.
Okay, thank you again. Well, on that note, with the establishment that I had talked about on South State, they have a special use, and they're very, very loud. So, you know, we haven't done anything about that, and we've had numerous calls about that to the police.
I'm not sure which establishment you're referring to.
Well, I was being polite by not telling.
Well, I know I've prosecuted one on South State Street a couple, three times now, and they paid fines on those.
The one that's by the pizza place by the corner?
Yeah, yeah. And, and the last time they were in court, they actually came in and they had, I believe, removed a manager, switched managers, something like that. And I haven't had, I haven't gotten a complaint since then. I don't know if the Police Department has.
Uh, Chief Woody?
Yeah, just wanted to let the Aldermen know, uh, what the process is from a Police Department standpoint. When we do receive a call for service at any of the, uh, local establishments that serve alcohol, and there's, uh, an incident, whether it be a fight, disorderly, something, uh, potentially alcohol-related, regardless of what the outcome of that call for service is, we'll do a report, and then we'll forward that report to, uh, Attorney Drela, uh, to, uh, decide what the appropriate action, uh, to take is from that point forward. So, uh, I would see the sidewalk cafe being no different of a process.
Okay. And, um, just for clarity's sake, I, uh, understand, uh, I have received calls on, uh, that establishment and have actually followed up on that, uh, numerous times. It is my understanding, as the City Attorney, uh, had said, that, uh, that is going to be an improvement because of one thing or another. And, uh, I have no doubt that that's going to be the case. If it isn't the case, then we certainly will address it as we, as we have in the past. But, um, I think that's the best we can do. Okay? Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have a, uh, motion on the floor then, uh, and a second. And, uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay. Uh, the ayes have it, and, uh...
And again, Mr. Mayor, when it comes back for first reading, it's going to look a little bit different than what we discussed, because I will include the provisions that were designed, and we allow this on temporary basis to protect the neighborhoods, and then if the council wants to pull them out, it can at that point.
Okay. All right. Everybody agree? Thank you. And, uh, item B, the mobile, uh, food vehicles. We have a memo dated March eighth regarding food trucks and, um, the regulation sale of food and beverages for mobile food trucks operating on city streets. Uh, you can read that for yourself. Um, this, uh, amendment, uh, would regulate, uh, both, uh, street sales as well as sales upon private property in part. Uh, number one, increase the fee for all mobile food trucks to five hundred dollars a year. Limit private property operations of mobile food trucks to the commercial industrial zoning districts. It does not allow some use, uh, in the residential district for a private part, party only. Requires evidence that state and local sales tax are paid. Prevents the outdoor storage of mobile food trucks in all but the industrial zoning districts, and helps minimize negative secondary effects such as noise and light issues. And the rest of it, I'm sure you've had it in front of you and had a chance to read it. Uh, the City Attorney may have some comments, but in the meantime, first, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second, uh, by Alderman Burden, and for now, discussion, questions, concerns. Alderwoman Mohal?
So, um, I love when we get to see food trucks. Especially at Buchanan Street Strolls. I think that is, um, a really great event, and it's a great wa- great, uh, way to, um... Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, the food trucks are an attraction at Buchanan Street Strolls. I do know, um, from the summer that we had many food trucks that decided not to come because of some extra fees. I know, uh, from the Health Department, um, I believe, um, that they... I could not find exactly what the fees were temporary versus permanent for food trucks. Um, I do know that they pay a four hundred dollar fee, um, to have their commercial kitchen or their, um... Pardon me? Yes, uh, inspected, and then the other fees for, for the Health Department. And I do know that some of them did not come out because of these extra fees, and I would hate to see food trucks not coming to Belvedere or, um, prohibit other food trucks from Belvedere operating because of this. Health Department already has fees for it.
So, uh, City Attorney?
Why don't I discuss first what yours does and doesn't do? Currently, our city code does require registration of food trucks. Think of the Good Humor Man. The trucks go up and down the roads, pull over and sell off the side of the truck. Um, and we do regulate those to some extent, Ray, though not a great extent. Um, the current ordinance, for example, does not require when they file the registration to show proof that the Health Department's actually inspected them or have you, or a Health Department. What this ordinance primarily does is change our codes to affect those food trucks operating on private property. Yes, the ones that are doing street sales will have to comply with the higher permit fee and the inspections and everything else that's in there. Um, but they've been regulated already. It's really, uh, attaching to the ones that are serving, excuse me, on private property, because quite frankly, they have proliferated in town, and that's fine. That's wonderful. I enjoy going there as well. But there's absolutely no knowledge base, number one, as to whether they've been inspected by Fire Department, Health Department, or anything else. I know of at least one or two that pop up on weekends at night only when nobody's here to inspect them. So if we have pre-inspection, we know we've issued a permit, then the police know they've been inspected and they can operate. The other problem we've run into, um, is, you know, I've noticed that going up and down Logan Avenue in the summer sometimes, there's an establishment that sets up in one of the empty parking lots. He's got a, a big speaker out there blasting music that I can hear as I drive down if our window's closed on Logan Avenue. And I don't know what the neighbors in the area feel about it. I haven't had a lot of complaints. But it would regulate that kind of thing, no sound amplification. Um, if you've got your little bell, the Good Humor guy rings going down the street, that's fine, but no amplified sound. There is an exception in the requirement for city-sponsored events. Um, now, Strolls used to be city-sponsored. Now, I guess it's probably a chamber event. That might be something we have to talk about. But they're exempted from portions of this ordinance. They still have to have their inspections. They still have to have the Health Department certifications, but they don't have the same requirements as far as the fees and things like that go that somebody operating normally would have. Um, what it does do is it limits the operation on private property only to the commercial and industrial districts. In the residential district, it may operate as part of a private party. So if you're having a, a birthday party, a wedding, and you want to, you know, have a food truck come out and cater it, they can still do that, but only for private property and twice per year. Um, if they want to operate on commercially zoned property, one, we want to see proof that the owner has consented to it. They could be popping up on some of these empty lots, and the owner may have no idea about it. So we want to acknowledge that the owner's consented to it. And we want a site plan, uh, to ensure that the, get basically location permits, similar to what we did with, um, video gaming. A not, no-cost location permit, but so that we can determine where they're putting the food truck, whether it's going to interfere with traffic patterns in that commercial establishment. For example, there's one on, on North State that keeps moving their, um, trailer food vending operation around a lot and blocking all of their parking from time to time. It limits where they can park it on the commercial property. It does not prohibit parking on commercial property, but, number one, it has to be in compliance with our zoning code, which ensures that you don't have any willy-nilly enterprise parking there and that it's parked in a way that will not interfere with sightlines and things like that of traffic. And it has some basic safety protocols, like if you're going to use power, don't leave a cord hanging through the middle of the parking lot for people to trip on. So that's what it does do. Does it increase the cost? Yes, it does. It went from one hundred to five hundred dollars. That's up to the council. That's just a number we arrived at at staff level, but that's up to you if you want to cha- charge that. Do we have to do this? No. But I, I've noticed myself driving through town that there's a lot of these that sometimes sit parked, not being used most of the time, and suddenly they are open on the weekends, and I have no idea if they've been inspected or not. It does require them all to be roadworthy and certified and registered with the state of Illinois, because it's a mobile food truck. It's supposed to move. You don't want your mobile food truck to be simply another building on a lot that never moves, because then everybody would just create a food truck and create a new building on the lot that does not meet zoning requirements, and they'll call it a food truck. So it does require it to be registered and, and roadworthy. So that's what it does and doesn't do.
And, uh, with that comment being made, that was one of the things that, uh, I felt, um, strongly about was that, um, there are individuals that have businesses here, restaurants, that have bricks and mortars that pay taxes. They pay property taxes and what have you. And, um, you know, certainly as, uh, the City Attorney pointed out, you can have a food truck, and they can be on every corner, and they're not regulated. They're not registered. Uh, I don't know, uh, for sure how you, uh, how you would enforce that. But I also know that they don't have nearly as much at stake as an individual who owns a business here in the community. And that does take, take away from them. Do I think they should be regulated for all the health reasons? I think that's a good idea. For, for the enforcement, uh, of it, absolutely. I think it's a good idea. And, uh, then from an investment standpoint, um, as the City Attorney pointed out, if everybody has a food truck and, uh, you know, everybody's going to go there, and we don't, uh, try and, uh, understand who they are, what, uh, you know, I mean, we've got, we've got a food, someone who's designated as a food truck that actually was a, you know, a building built on a trailer, and, uh, so that's not a food truck. So I think that there are all kinds of ways that we, uh, should look into this, and I, I do support it, but Alderman Snow had his hand up.
So with all that said, um, I think, uh, the five hundred is steep. I think we should go back to the one hundred dollars per year. And once this is implemented and the vendors and, um, are notified that this exists and they need to comply, when they do not comply, that we go heavy-handed on the enforcement, the hundred dollar per day per incident and that. And so you can discourage the, um, abuse of any of this at that point.
We can certainly do that. Um, a couple of comments. Number one, while I sympathize with Mayor's comments about the existing brick and mortar, you notice what's not in there. Is there any kind of requirement they stay X number of feet away from a brick and mortar restaurant? That's because such an ordinance has already been struck down in Chicago. We can't do that. Why, I'm not really sure, but that's what the court decided. So as far as the, the penalties provision, yes, it's, we can reduce the fine, the fee, not the fine, the fee to a hundred dollars per day. That's up to the council. On the fine side, some of the fines are the normal city minimum one hundred, maximum seven fifty. A couple of fines are very steep, thousand-dollar minimums. And those are cases where they operate knowing that they're not supposed to be operating, they just ignore us and do it anyway. The intent of having a high fine like that is to dissuade them from being scofflaws. Um, one thing that, you know, obviously would be in the implementation phase, and what encourages the mayor and the city to do, when we adopt this thing, there's going to be a period of time when these operators don't know about it yet. And simply tell code enforcement, tell the police, give them warnings the first time or two, and then start enforcement.
In the form of a motion to reduce it to a hundred dollars.
I don't know. Second? A second by Alderman Mohal? Okay. Alderman Flurry?
But before we vote on that, just, uh, you know, they said the staff, uh, decided to change it from one hundred to five hundred. So obviously you have more experience dealing with this on a day-in-and-day-out basis, so what was the, kind of, I guess, the reasoning to go from one hundred to five hundred before we say, reduce it?
The added time and cost of taking time to actually review all these site plans coming in, Fire Department doing additional inspections on them, things like that. One of the requirements, right now, most of those food trucks never receive an inspection from the Fire Department, so they have no idea if, and the chief can speak better about what's required, I hope. But as far as fire suppression systems in there, cooking stoves and vents and things like that, we have no idea what's in those trucks.
Chief?
Just briefly, some of the simple requirements that they would check is through the site plan, where is it located? Obviously, they have combustibles, they have compressed gas, they have, uh, combustible grease for cooking, things like that. So if it's parked right next to a building or a assembly building, or if, if it's not checked or approved through a site plan, we won't have that information. So that's just something very, very simple. Something else, super simple, you know, do they have wheel chocks? Are people, are picnic tables like right in front of the vehicle, and the vehicles not, not, uh, have wheel chocks? It could cause a situation where it rolls, or, um, a lot of those are really simple things, but until someone knows... One thing about the inspections department, just like Attorney Drela said, is that we work with the business owners to educate them on how to, uh, be safe. So we're not going to come in heavy-handed and hear citations. I mean, that's one of the things that I ask that we do is when we give our notices, that I take the word citation off of it, because we're just, we're trying to educate. A lot of times, if you don't know, you don't know what you don't know. So until you know, then you shouldn't be cited. So we would work with them and say, these are the things that, and these are all based on, uh, accepted standards, standards and, uh, that we regulate by ordinance, and so it's, it's nothing that, that we make up. But it's just things that are, hey, in this industry, you got to do these things, X, Y, Z, uh, because we know if you don't, they're not safe. For example, if you're cooking with a propane, there's a limit on the size of the tank, like, you don't need one that would be for a commercial business, uh, to feed a small trailer. Or, you know, when was the last time that the connections were checked? Are these connections leaking? Is it safe for the workers inside? Are there carbon, carbon monoxide detectors inside there while they're cooking in this little trailer without air conditioning or anything like that? So those are real, real simple things, and we would definitely work with the owners on that and, and educate them. And then if they were non-compliant by choice, then we could get into some of the things Attorney Drela's talking about. But definitely for the Fire Department inspections, our initial goal would not, because they haven't been inspected before. So I would assume that there's at least a handful of things that they didn't know. But everything that we do, it's for their safety, their worker's safety, the safety of the residents that are, um, eating that food or around that truck. So that would be what the Fire Department inspection would look like.
Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, with that being said, what the chief just said there, instead of arbitrarily just changing it back to, or keeping it at the one hundred, I guess I would ask, and I don't know who to ask this question, but what do you think the city, what fee do you think would cover these, um, inspections and what everything that we need to do to, you know, what's, what's a reasonable fee to cover everything, just cover our costs?
Well, I think, uh, the ordinance that you have before the amendment would cover it. Uh, I think that's a fair, I think that's fair. I mean, you see, uh, some food trucks that are parked, uh, in a facility at a site year-round, and, uh, they don't have any of the expenses that a lot of your, uh, bricks and mortar, your restaurants have. Is five hundred dollars, uh, a year? Is, uh, that too much, or is that, um, you know, is that going to cover the costs? The costs, we're, I mean, we don't see a few, uh, food trucks. We see a lot. And all the things that Chief Shadle had pointed out, um, are all things that, uh, obviously, uh, need to be, uh, should be regulated for public safety. Uh, and I, and I don't see it being done. I think... I think one of the things that caught my eye was we had seen a food truck that was parked, a trailer that was parked on a steep incline downtown on a gravel lot. And I, you know, I don't know. I don't know if that's safe or not. But it does take time and it takes effort to make sure that they are. So it's an investment as well for them. But, you know, nothing's free. And Alderman Porter, did you?
Yeah, well, that was kind of the thing I, I just don't want to see. People think that we're trying to make a profit off of it. I think I'd like to see it just cover the costs of, you know, whatever it's going to take to keep them, keep them safe.
I understand that. Thank you. Alderman Barrington?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I think the $500 is extremely reasonable, and if I were to make any amendments, I'd be going the opposite way. I'm thinking more like $1,000, which would be 10% of a liquor license or maybe even approaching that. So definitely not in favor to reduce it at all.
Thank you. Alderwoman Frank?
I think it's a slap in the face to people that have the brick and mortar because they're paying way more than $500 a year. But one thing I want to bring to your attention that other people don't know in the room, but you do know, that you were called because one of the food trucks was bringing all their garbage from Rondford to Belvedere to the dumpster here. And the stench was unbearable. It was just awful. And you took care of it, but the city had to come in and those guys had to physically take those bags out to take care of it. So there is a problem. I think $500 is nothing.
Thank you. Alderman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Attorney Drella. If we were to leave this increase to $500, did you say that the food trucks that came to Belvedere for like the strolls, would they be just paying the $100? Or would they also be having to pay the $500 increase?
So section, the proposed amendment, section 26307 contains the exceptions to the ordinance. I encourage you to turn to that within your memo that I presented. The first ones that are exempt are those operating on a property owned by a unit of government with approval from that unit of local government. For example, if the parks are having an event and they want to buy food trucks, they can do it. Same thing with the county, same thing with the township, what have you. Units of government, if they're operating for them on their property with their permission, they're exempt. From everything, including the permitting licensing requirements, however, they still have to get all the inspections, you know, obviously, because that's a safety issue. The next group that are exempt are those that are providing food or beverage as a response to a national disaster. Red Cross comes in and they're serving food or what have you. Obviously, we're not going to make them jump through hoops to be able to do that. The third one is a mobile food vehicle operating during a special event sponsor or approved by the city of Belvedere with, is exempt. So for example, strolls, you approve shutting down the street and allow the event. You can then allow those food trucks to come in. Again, they got to comply with the inspections and things like that. But the permitting issue is not there, so they are permitted to do that. There's exceptions for, that was the last one.
Also such as Heritage Days?
Yes. Hometown Christmas.
Hometown Christmas, that would be.
Thank you.
That answers your question. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion to amend, an amendment, which would be, as I understand it, just on the first page, number one, which would change the fees to mobile food trucks to $100 a year from 500 that is written here. So I guess we would have a voice vote on that amendment to reduce what's in front of you this evening from 500 to 100. When the clerk calls a roll, all those in favor of the amendment, please answer yes. If there's any opposed, no.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
No.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
No.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Barrington?
No.
Three in favor?
All right, amendment fails. So then in front of you, you have the same thing with item one remaining at $500. Any questions regarding that? All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, aye, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
Yes.
Barrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And you'll receive this with the, in its entirety at the next meeting. Item C, section 125 FSA plan, you have that in front of you. So I guess I would ask the city attorney if he would want to discuss this, start us out here.
For some reason, this seems to be the city attorney show this evening. Going back in time to the mid 2000s, during collective bargain negotiations with the FOP, they asked that the city institute a section 125 FSA plan, commonly known as a cafeteria plan. I'm sure that some of you have heard of those before. Essentially allows you to cover certain medical and dependent care obligations on pre-tax basis by essentially putting money into a pre-tax account. They can use that money to pay those obligations as the year goes on. The positive to it to the employee and to the, to the employees, one, they're using pre-tax money to pay for these things, so they're saving the tax on it. Two, it reduces their taxable income for their tax bracket purposes. The benefit to the city is it decreases its social security obligation, at least for the non-public safety employees who don't have social security, as well as any other tax obligations associated with that income. The negative to it to the employee is, is basically use or lose it proposition. If they put in $1,000 and only use 600 of it, in theory, they could be out the $400. And there's some exceptions to that with carryovers and what have you, depending on how much you allow them to put in. But the general rule is it's use or lose it. But that's the employee's issue. They just have to, you know, plan for that. So anyway, we agreed to that back in, I think it was 2004 or '05 with the FOP. And when we went to implement it, at the time, the third-party administrators, which run the program for you, and you hired them to do that, needed X number of employees to be able to do it, and they couldn't cough up enough employees to get it going. And somebody brought forward again, they're interested in doing it again. And rather than just waiting for one collective bargaining unit, it makes sense just to make it open citywide. Because quite frankly, it saves the city money, it saves the employee money. And so what we figured out through the help of our insurance consultant, who of course works with these kinds of plans as well and makes recommendations on it, is that if we require a minimum contribution to an FSA account of at least $800, then we think our payroll savings will actually pave the costs incurred administering the program. So the recommendation is to establish a section 125 FSA plan allowing for expenditures for medical benefits, dental benefits, vision benefits, healthcare flexible spending accounts, independent care, and to authorize the mayor to execute the envisioned, new group setup and any other documents in conformance with the March 9, 2023 memo, which should include the $800 minimum contribution. I think I got that right, sir, didn't I?
Motion by Alderman Snow. We have a second. Second by Alderwoman Prather. Alderman Snow?
So Attorney Drella, where does the money go if they have the 800 and they only spend 400? Where is that pool of money? Who's the holder of the money and who gets the money in the end run?
The city. I hate saying that.
The city receives it. City receives it and it would probably go under miscellaneous.
Now, there's all kinds of exceptions to it that we will build in the plan. For example, they can roll over a certain amount to the next year and then try and use it then. We can set it up so that, I think it takes at least two years after they leave before we can default and keep it for ourselves, things like that. Obviously, the goal for the city is not to take money from its employees. We hope they use it.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. And so this is still just a voluntary thing. So not all city employees have to do it. It's just if they want to take advantage of this savings, tax savings, they can do it, but it's not required for everyone to do it?
Completely voluntary, correct.
Thank you.
My employer, previous employer, they offered a flex spending as well. So it's money out of their pocket that they invest for whatever they see their future needs may be. It's a good deal, but like the city attorney said, I believe it'll be a wash regarding any type of bookkeeping for the city. So it does benefit the employee. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. So my question is, if there wasn't enough interest before, how many do we need to have to show that we have interest?
From my understanding within vision, it's two. It's significantly dropped. Back when we first started doing this, it was new enough where.
We have more interest than that, but.
Yeah. I think there was only one last time we came up.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Then to go ahead and institute the 125, section 125 FSA plan as described. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And we have item D, Belvedere Fire Department Acquired Structure Training, excuse me. And there's a letter from Chief Shadle in your packet, a memo. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory. There might be some historical here. Chief, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. If you guys look at page 32, you'll see it's a simple agreement to get permission in written form to train in acquired structures. So just to go back to something that was recent and familiar for you guys, when, next to the Taco Bell, when the Dairy Queen, they had, the owner came in and said, hey, we have a building we're going to demolish. And if the fire department wants, you guys can train there. And I said, okay. So I, Attorney Drell and I, bless you. Attorney Drell and I created this general permission slip, and basically it says, yes, I own it. I can give you permission. I do recognize that when you train, a lot of your types of training that you do causes damage to the buildings. And then I acknowledge all that, and I give you permission from this state to this state to do that. So it's a simple permission form. And so for that structure right there, we actually had a regional MABUS 8 training where we were able to put a car into the building to simulate a car crashing into a building and simulate a rescue. And that training went out through MABUS 8, and the technical rescue team actually came here to Belvedere and practiced on that situation. So these trainings are awesome. They're super valuable when they happen. Another real common one is a property owner is building a new house, or like the Anderson Funeral Home, they let us train in three of those houses before they're torn down. So some of the things that we would practice there, they cause damage. So we want to make sure that I have permission, it is yours, and you acknowledge that it's going to damage the property. So one of the trainings that was super valuable on the house was our deck gun attack. So one thing that the firefighters do when something is fully involved, or there's a large body of fire in the house is they pull up and they can deploy their Master Stream Deck Gun oftentimes within 30 seconds. And that flows between 500 and 1,000 gallons per minute. So there is a little bit of a technique to that to make sure that you line it up and actually get the water where you want it to go. Otherwise, it will just dump out on the ground while you're ramping up and things like that. So practicing those are great. And as you can imagine, if you dump a few thousand gallons of water in a house in a couple of minutes, you know, it's not going to be the same anymore after that. So to finish up, it's just a simple agreement. The motion I'm requesting is ongoing permission, authorization from council to sign these when these situations come up. In next committee meeting, there's going to be a training agreement that is longer and has more involvement than this. I'm going to bring that to you guys. So this would be just the simple, we're going in, there's a building, the owner doesn't request anything out of us, and it just documents that. So the motion I'm looking for is ongoing authorization to have, to be able to sign the standard acquired structure training agreement.
Got a motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any other discussion? Excuse me, Alderman Porter?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one question. Is there any type of insurance concern on this? If somebody's hurt during the training, over and above just a normal call?
So it's briefly addressed. On the form itself, it just says that we're going to keep and maintain necessary workman's compensation insurance provided, and that the city of Belvedere shall ensure its personnel and equipment, which we do. It's just basically an acknowledgement there that they're, that we do what we do.
Thank you, Alderman Porter. Any other questions or concerns? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And moving on, we have item E. The ambulance service rates, billing and collection. And in your packet regarding ambulance fees dated March 8, 2023, is a memo from, excuse me, Attorney Drella. And we had talked about this, and when you read it, on the second page, you will see some of the services, the services with the associated rates. And so I will turn it over to Chief Shadle. If he had any comments first, and then city attorney, I know he will, so, chief?
Yep, absolutely. The first thing that Attorney Drella is going to ask you to look over tonight is the ordinance and the rates. So that is one thing you'll see. Attached to the memo there is the billing ordinance and the rates. And I do have some additional information that I printed out for you guys to show you where these numbers came from. Because it wasn't obviously a number that we just pulled from a hat. So I'm going to give you guys a copy of each of this. But the very first thing that we're going to consider for you tonight is simply the ordinance and the rate. So there are a couple of other things that we have to discuss, but we're going to kind of separate those initially in our mind while we talk about this.
And while he's passing those out. You recall when we started this whole process, there was a bunch of steps we had to go through. One was to hire an ambulance company. We agreed to hire Metro. Second was to hire a billing company. We hired Andre's Billing. The third step is to set the rates of what we're going to charge for ambulance service. And that is in part what this ordinance does. And those rates were chosen after the chief made a fairly decent study of surrounding communities, what they charged for various ambulance rates. And they're put together in such a way as to coincide with Medicare, Medicaid's billing rates. So that when they look at the codes, they'll be familiar to them and they can process it quickly. The last step they're going to have to do is actually referencing the ordinance. And if you look at the ordinance, it gives the council the authority in section 4662 to adopt policies relating to the collection of fees and procedure for forgiving debts. And I don't necessarily want that to be part of the ordinance. We don't necessarily want that posted on our website or a code of ordinances. That is something that the council and the chief can decide how you want to handle it. But obviously, you're never going to be in a situation where you receive 100% reimbursement. So for example, when we do a basic life support transport. So for example, when we do a basic life support transport that costs one thousand nine hundred dollars plus twenty-one dollars per mile and that patient has Medicare or Medicaid, all we're going to receive is what Medicare or Medicaid is willing to bill us or send us. Because by receiving that money, we have to agree to forgive the remainder. Contrary, if somebody has private pay insurance, for example, I have Blue Cross Blue Shield through the city. The city could seek, they're only going to pay a percentage of what we bill. And of course, the city could then charge the co-pays and any secondary insurance that might be out there for part of the difference. And there's still going to be some left over usually. And then they could, what we call sometimes hard bill, the patient for the difference. And the council will have to decide whether or not we want to go after the difference. But that'll be a separate discussion after we do the ordinance as far as what the rates would be. And I'll turn it back to the chief now that he's sat back down.
Thank you, Attorney Drell. One thing I want to point out before we look at the sheet I just gave you is that in the ordinance itself, you guys will see ALS one, ALS two, ALS emergency, BLS and BLS emergency. The reason why all those are in there and it shows the same rates is that although even if we had one rate for everything, that that needs to be specified in the ordinance because those are the definitions of services as given by Medicaid, Medicare. So to be compliant with billing in the ordinance, that's why they're all listed out. So I just, I wanted to clear that up for you guys so there was no confusion. Basically, what you think of when you think of an ambulance, you have ALS and BLS. ALS service would be, believe it or not, anytime you're hooked up to the heart monitor. Because reading that monitor is not a basic skill. So if you needed a splint and a ride to the ambulance, that would be an example of like a BLS service. As you guys know, that the cost of the ambulance isn't as much with the service. It is having them there and available when you call nine-one-one. So you see, there's really, that's where the cost is. Because they're there, they're dedicated. So the actual providing the service itself, that's why you see not a huge gap between ALS and BLS. Because it's not intended, the large driver of cost, it really isn't the supplies that people use. The large driver of cost is the fact that you have two people in an ambulance when you call nine-one-one and they're there hopefully within four minutes. So a lot of communities, more and more, what they're doing when they update their billing ordinances is they're just doing a single rate. So you'll see Harvard and Marengo, they have the, it's just a flat rate for that service. So if someone was wondering, all I did is I got a ride from here to the hospital in town and I just had a splint put on my leg and that's all I had and it was nineteen hundred bucks. That seems a little high. But as you guys have seen, with the cost of these ambulances and staffing and things like that, the true cost is the availability and not the service that you provide. All the revenue estimates that you guys saw, you see it doesn't cover the cost of those ambulances. And you know, District Two is going through a referendum because they're doing, they have the same situation that we do. So charging less for the service or it's not happening now because everybody is realizing the true cost is in the availability of these ambulances. So you'll see three things. You'll see in the rates, you'll see the ALS charge, the BLS charge, a loaded mile charge, and then a non-transport charge. So if you're looking at that first sheet there. So how did we come up with the numbers? We proposed a rate of twenty-one hundred dollars for an ALS transport. We looked at the departments around us. The list was actually longer than this, but Harlem Rosco, for example, they have an ambulance tax that provides that. So they don't charge their residents anything, but they have that tax that the residents are already paying. But they charge their non-residents. Another example of that would be like Capron Rescue. And I'm not sure exactly what they do, but they are funded by an ambulance tax. And so I kind of took out any outliers that were really different than our situation. And you see, once you average that, it's landing right in the middle of what the area departments charge. There was also a department that when I talked to the chief, the rates were really low. He says, we're way out of line and we just haven't had a chance to update our ordinance yet. So one of the things you'll see in the ordinance is a three percent increase annually. So it'll start at what that is and then it'll automatically increase. One of the chiefs who was in that situation, he said, hey, I'm seeing a lot of other departments do this. Make sure you have a cost of living increase so you don't have to go through and formally change the ordinance every time that this changes. So the charge is the charge. BLS, nineteen hundred. Again, it's right there in the average of what the other departments are charging. If you go down the line to non-transport ALS, what that means is some departments, actually you see almost all of them, say someone calls nine-one-one and they're a diabetic and they start an IV and they give D fifty and the patient comes back and they say, oh, I don't want to go to the hospital. In that situation, there's a little bit of a charge. The reason why I'm recommending that we don't charge for that is because, number one, insurance doesn't cover that at all. So we'd submit it to their insurance. There's very few, except really premium, insurance policies that cover that kind of service, the non-transport. The second reason is that because insurance doesn't cover it, the actual collection of it is in the single digits. They said that it's a real small collection rate on that. Excuse me, one second. That's a sign that I'm talking too much. I apologize. And then the last one was the mileage. The only reason that that one didn't land right at the average, when it had some other figures, some outliers in it that had gotten dropped that I didn't include in this. And so when we first did it, that was right around, the average was twenty-one. So again, these are the rates that are listed in the ordinance. And I'll be happy to answer any specific questions on that.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? You know, he is right. Availability costs money, as we know. We know that we're in this situation, we probably have a better understanding than we have in the last twenty years since OSF obviously provided this and we had quite a, what I would call a sweet arrangement. But with that being said, we know that that isn't the reality and they know it as well. And here we are today. I thought the chief did a great job regarding bringing up, you know, the proposal for resident, non-resident, ALS, BLS, both. And then also non-transport. It isn't the purpose of the city to try and make money on this because that isn't, that isn't going to happen. Believe me. It's for us to be able to have the similar type service that we've enjoyed, our residents have had for a long time. And with that being said, it takes an investment. And that's part of what the investment is here tonight that we're looking at as the chief has outlined. But as again, we say nothing's free and Lifeline probably has a much better understanding of that than we do right now. But we are intending on putting the best service, the most affordable, being the most prudent that we can be to provide our residents with a ambulance service that is very, very close to what we had. So I think, Chief, I think you've done a great job with that. A lot of homework, I know, and I appreciate it. And any other questions regarding that? Regarding our rates and the motion on the floor? Okay. So...
I don't believe anyone has made a motion.
The motion of Florida State Council on Ordinance Setting, Chapter forty-six. Over the City of Belvidere municipal code, insert a new Article Three of Emergency Medical Services Transport. That's set forth in attachment to the March eighth, twenty twenty-three memo.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Snow. Any, any discussions, any questions regarding that motion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item F.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to have a conversation about methods of billing and collections tonight? Or did you want to save that for future date? That was the discussion as to whether or not we, after seeking payment from insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, would be seeking the difference from patients, whether resident or non-resident, what have you?
I think if you don't object, the council, if you want to get into that a little bit, I think we should.
It is on the agenda.
So anyhow, Chief, I think we had talked about how resident, non-resident, the approach to that. I agree with you, but if you want to chat about that?
Yes, sir, thank you. If you guys will look at the page of the handout. So there's really two parts to the collections. We're going to look at them one at a time. One is described as the billing remainder or balanced billing. And what this means is, say, you call for an ambulance. You get billed two thousand dollars. Your insurance allowable amount is fifteen hundred and your co-pay is a hundred. The insurance pays the fourteen hundred and you pay the one hundred. And since we're out of network for everybody, then it is possible, it would be your decision to bill the balance, that other five hundred dollars that was not recouped. So that's called balanced billing. As you see in front of you, I took those same comparables and I showed you how they handle it. What I'm recommending is that for residents, that we don't balance bill. And what that will mean is that it would treat our residents as if we were an in-network provider. So as you know, if you go to a doctor that is in your network, that allowable amount is all you pay. The rest is just taken off of the bill. So that's, now, if you went to an out-of-network provider, your insurance will say, hey, the allowable amount is this, but you're going to get billed for the remainder of that. So that's what, the easiest way to think of balanced billing. But what I do want to point out is that for Medicare and Medicaid, which in twenty twenty-one was seventy-eight percent of the transports, you don't have the option to balance bill. By accepting Medicare and Medicaid as a payment, you accept that payment as a payment in full. So if you balance billed, you would only be affecting the sixteen percent that have health insurance, the sixteen percent of private health insurance within the community. Cherry Valley doesn't balance bill. District Three does not. Harvard and Marengo do balance bill, but they cap it at six hundred dollars. So they will bill up to six hundred dollars and no more. And then North Park does balance bill. But my proposal, since taxes are, people from Belvidere are already paying taxes and providing, as you saw, almost a million dollars or a million dollars in year one, that they're paying for this service. My proposal is that we don't bill them the balance. And so the balance specifically would be any amount above the allowable amount and the co-insurance and co-pay. So we would still anticipate, or in this, I would expect if you have a co-insurance or co-pay, if I get a bill for medical services, I know I'm going to have to pay my ten dollar co-pay to see the doctor. Or if it's covered under co-insurance, I know I'm going to have to pay my ten percent. Right? I think that's normal as far as for people who have insurance to expect that, that charge. So this balanced billing would be anything above that. My recommendation is that we don't bill for anything above what the insurance provides and the co-payment or co-insurance. Now, one thing, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself. This is in a motion, how this, it's unrelated to the ordinance. So the ordinance had, you know, the committee discussion tonight and that will come back for first and second reading. Attorney Drell is going to decide how to bring this forth most appropriately based on your feedback. And it could be a resolution or a simple motion. And so I just wanted to clearly explain that. On the second line, you see that every single entity listed here balance bills non-residents. And that makes sense because they're not taxpayers in the community. They're not subsidizing the other half of the service. And so that is the extent of the information I have for you for the balanced billing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Attorney Drell, go ahead.
And before you start asking the questions, what the chief didn't get into is if we do elect to balance bill, and it's certainly something that the chief is recommending with respect to non-residents at least, it creates two things. The agreement we signed with Andre's Billing is they will send out up to three bills to the patients. And either it will be for the co-payment, co-insurance amount or it could include the balanced billing portion, what I call the uncovered amount as well for the non-residents. The question then becomes, what happens when those letters go unanswered? And if you do wish to balance bill, then you have to make a decision whether you're willing to send the portion that is not covered for non-residents to collections. And if we wish to do that, we'll have to hire a collection agency to do it, which is usually on a contingency fee basis, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Alderman Porter. Okay, I hate to see anything go to collections, but let me ask you this. There's going to be people who cannot pay the bill because of hardship, but there's also going to be people that can pay the bill, but just will refuse to pay the balance of the bill. Is there any way to have the, have a hardship cases or have paperwork that they can do to show hardship that they can't pay the balance of the bill?
You could give, I always nominated the chief and the mayor as twenty appointments, maybe somebody else. You could always give somebody on staff the authority to write off amounts if in their discretion, they believe that the situation warrants it either through inability to pay or actually just causing severe hardship or perhaps, you know, classic example. I hate to say this, but my prior life before I was here, one of the jobs I had, working for my private firm, was representing fire protection districts. And one of the districts I represented ran ambulance. And somehow I got stuck doing their collections. It was not the most fun, enjoyable part of my life. And I'll be honest with you, if we saw twenty cents on the dollar in collections, we were doing really, really, really well. The amount of people that, at that point, go into bankruptcy, the amount of people that, because that's basically getting hit by a lot of medical bills too. A lot of people that are just, they're on food stamps or they, now it'd be link or they just don't have any money. It gets to be difficult. But you'd have to give that person the authority to forgive that debt then at that point. We could make, come back to council, but it'd get to be like, you know, the flooding that comes around every spring and you're sitting there deciding on a case-by-case basis which debts you want to relieve. And I don't think you want to have those discussions on the council floor. So you probably want to designate one or two city officials with the authority to forgive debt in appropriate cases.
Continue, Alderman Porter. Well, excuse me. I know that hospitals have, you know, paperwork that you fill out if you're low income or whatever, you know, for hardship. And that's kind of the idea of what I was thinking. Any other questions? Chief?
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing, since these two topics are intertwined, go ahead and... Attorney Drell is a hundred percent correct. I talked to EMS Billing today and she said that there's three companies... I talked to EMS Billing today, and she said that there's three companies that they commonly work with as far as collections, and that their fee is 28%, and then, yes, it would then require us to agree to contract with a, a collections company. It is up to you guys, though, if, as far as billing private insurance, their co-insurance and co-pays. So District Three, what District Three does is they just treat private insurance like Medicaid and Medicare, and they just submit the bill to the insurance company, and then write off the rest. So, on that issue, whatever, whatever way you're, you're feeling, let on that. However, if we do balance bill our, our non-residents, which I think is reasonable, we, we would still have to set up the collection agency, and then for that, but we wouldn't have resident situations where, like Alderman Porter, like you said, if we did it that way, then you wouldn't have a, a situation where a resident is calling you and saying, hey. One, one thing about that discretion, as talking with the chiefs, that it's, it's a sig, you know, it's, happens all the time, that they're getting these requests and having to, to weigh that, and, I mean, honestly, I, I wouldn't want that discretion, because I wouldn't want to, one, have the time dedicated to, to do that, and then, two, I mean, I would, I'm kind of soft, so I'd probably just say yes all the time. So, so I don't know, but I'd be the keeper of the guard there, so. But again, that's up to you, and that's, that, that's an option to where we just, as far as residents, we bill and treat the 16% that have private health insurance, we just treat them like, uh, the 78% and, and just accept what insurance gets, and then there's no bills that we even send out to our residents. And then beyond that, if you're a non-resident, you get the bill, you go to collections, if you have a hardship, and you're a non-resident, unfortunately, we wouldn't have time to handle situations, or it'd be like any other debt owed to the city by a non-resident, and it'd be a straightforward situation. So, I mean, I did propose that we bill residents the co-pay and co-insurance, but, I mean, I, I would leave that up to you, it, is the situation like District Three does, is it going to be a huge revenue loss? We could see, and then again, since it's done by resolution, resolution and motion, it would be, and not within the ordinance, it's something that you guys could, uh, come back to, have a discussion, change the resolution, and say, you know what, we're really, um, getting taken advantage of. I don't think that would be the case, but we would probably, when we're talking about collections for non, non-residents, everybody balance bills non-residents, they're not paying the subs, they're not subsidizing the other half. And, um, our rates are reasonable, actually, I mean, I've seen some, uh, some rates, $3,600, $4,700, I know $2,100 sounds like a lot, but when you find out that, uh, an ambulance and that staff costs $800,000, you don't, you don't, uh, feel as bad about the $2,000 ride, because they're going to probably get there within four minutes and, and do a good job for you.
Perhaps in order to make, break this down to manageable bites, um, so we can move the process forward, I guess the first, if you turn to the second page of the chief's packet, it's titled billing resolution, billing remainder, balanced billing. And again, what I'll do is, after we have a decision on each segment of this, I'll put together probably as either a simple motion at council, or perhaps a resolution. But would there be a motion to not balance bill city residents and simply balance bill for non-residents of the city of Alvedere?
As the chief has outlined in his memo. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman, uh, second by Alderman Stevens regarding, uh, billing resolution, uh, balanced billing. Uh, any questions, any comments regarding that, Chief?
Attorney Drella, were you, the only thing I'd want to clarify for the record is that if you were, um, counting the residents' co-insurance and co-pays.
That's not part of balanced billing, that's obviously going out, balanced billing is the remainder.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the council, because I didn't want, we just had that discussion where we don't send that out, and I, I wanted them to be clear on what you were proposing.
And, so obviously, co-pays or co-insurance, as the chief described, would be paid by all, I'm talking about the remainder, after billing for that, the, called the uncovered amount.
As noted in the memo.
Yep.
Described. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, that motion passed, then we'll get to billing resolution regarding collections.
So to me, this is the harder part, this is the harder discussion. And it, it, I had a conversation with Alderman Porter, I don't know, a week or two ago, Alderman Porter came to my office and was concerned about how we're going to bill for this and what happens with uncovered amounts. And we've answered part of that question this evening. The harder question is, Andre's will now send out a bill to people that have private pay insurance, perhaps no insurance, and no Medicare, no Medicaid, truly uninsured people, which hopefully there aren't any left, in today's period of, uh, everybody has insurance, supposedly. And they send out the three bills, and they don't respond, what do we do? And I don't know what the council's thought on that is, would it be to retain a collection agency and to send them to collections at that point? And the other thing I was going to do before I came in tonight, I didn't get a chance to do, was, and Sarah may, or the clerk may remember, but I believe there's a provision through the, state of Illinois where some forms of municipal debt that are not unpaid can report, be reported to this, to the, uh, to the state, and they hold back some of the tax returns they may be getting in the future for that process. I don't know if this would be covered by that or not, I know certain fines and things like that are, um, I can look into that. But, um, would there be interest then in, in sending unpaid amounts that are subject to balanced billing, in those for non-residents, to collections? Yes, they're the ones that could balance bill. Well, I'd, I'd actually strike that, it could include residents, because it could be that co-insurance or co-pay amount.
So in other words, before, uh, what you have there, under billing resolutions, collections, uh, what the chief had pointed out, uh, was a yes on residents and non-residents regarding that. That was a proposal.
And one of the conversations I had, you know, actually with multiple people, was, it's real easy to say, we'll send out the letters, and if they don't respond, write it off. Because we really don't want to send people to collections, because we don't want to be the big, mean city, and I agree with that, I, I don't like doing that. I hate doing collections work when I was a private attorney. But that means that Mr. Drella, who pays his bills, paid for his, his, in, his bill, and paid the full amount, and Mr. X, I don't want to say an actual name, I'd offend somebody, but Mr. X, who maybe doesn't want to do that, and somehow hears that the city may not, probably doesn't say anything to collections anyway, won't pay the bill. And then you're in a situation where the honest people are paying the bills, and the dishonest people are not. So that's, that's the quandary that the council finds itself in.
Alderman Porter?
Well, I guess that kind of coincides with what I was talking about with hardship, if you send them out paperwork, and they prove by their salary that they can pay the bill, then to me, I wouldn't have a problem sending that to collections, but if they prove hardship, then I certainly wouldn't want to see that go to collections.
We can check with Andre's, I'm certain there's a way that, when they send out the bills, they can include a form saying, you know, problems paying this bill, or problems making payments, call this number, or submit this form, or go to this website, I mean, I'm sure they can do that through the billing process. They can check with Andre's on that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to, to that specifically, I could check with Andre's and find out for you.
Kind of like some of the drug commercials. Can't afford this, we can help.
So I guess pending, uh, an answer to that question, uh, the council, you want to think about this and then come back, and we'll come back?
And, and honestly, the first thing that had to get done tonight was that first part, citing the rates, that had to be done by the May 1 transition. And, and who we're going to bill, probably had to be done by sometime in July, and we've decided that issue tonight, we'll have it prepared, because, you know, by the time they start transporting, by the time first bills go out, year into June or July. How we actually collect unpaid amounts does not have to be made tonight, we don't have to make that decision, but we certainly want to open that discussion.
So we can continue this discussion when we get, uh, further information regarding, uh, what they, Andre's may be able to send out that would satisfy, uh, at least knowing more about, uh, you know, a person's ability to, ability to pay. All right? At M F, uh, we have Rock Valley Col, uh, Rock Valley College, um, on the agenda, and we have a request, uh, to waive permit fees for the Advanced Technology Center, ATC, uh, on a Phase Two project. There's a letter, uh, that I'd received, you have in front of you, regarding some work, uh, that they are going to be doing, uh, at RVC. That work consists of, uh, looks like, uh, air conditioning, uh, on the roof, parking lot repair, resurfacing work, uh, and, um, building out of a new simulator lab, and, uh, their intent is to use that, um, increase the operations there for heavy equipment operations training and truck driver training, uh, program that would be on-site. The addition will bring five new full-time equivalent employees, along with students participating in the program. And, uh, as part of the, uh, program, the north parking lot will be rebuilt to accommodate actual driver training. Those fees were anticipated to amount, uh, to $23,963.75, and the letter is asked, based upon the information that's in here, if, uh, and that would be after the Enterprise Zone discount, so that would be half, 50%, uh, the remainder would be nearly $24,000, and if we would waive that amount, so. Uh, I know where you're headed, uh, Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I just need to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this one due to a conflict.
And if it were me, I, and it was me at one time with comment, I would leave the room, and then, uh, that way make sure that you're not, uh, included with the majority, because you're not even here, uh, in the room. That's what I would do. Thank you. Okay. What's the pleasure? Is there a, uh, want to waive these fees, uh, according to the letter or not? It's certainly, uh, up to the council. If they choose to, uh, waive them, it will be a topic of discussion here a little later. If they choose no action, then they choose not to waive them. Uh, Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question would be, if we waived this for the Rock Valley College, will we open ourselves up to others that we have to waive too?
Well, I mean, my, I guess, um, you know, that's a good question, I mean, there certainly would be, uh, there could be other organizations that would ask us. We do waive them for Habitat for Humanity, I think we waive certain fees for them. I believe, uh, whenever RVC built here, I think those fees were originally waived, correct me if I'm wrong, and, uh, but I understand your point. Alderwoman Frank, continue.
I have another question, thank you. So, in these, uh, amount, almost $24,000, um, is there a lot of work that KIP has to do for those permit fees?
Well, I'm sure if KIP, I'm sure if KIP were her, here, he would tell you, yes, there is, because he has to be out there, and he has to make sure that, uh, the work is done accordingly, and that's why the fees are in place, so. Yep. Alderwoman Mohal, did you have? Okay, motion then to waive the fees, by Alderwoman Mohal, second by Alderman Snow, discussion. Alderwoman Frank, uh, first, then Alderwoman Mohal, yes?
Is there maybe a reduction first, before we jump to, uh, waiving the fees?
The motion on the floor is to waive the fees, so we'll address that one, uh, in order. Any other questions? Alderwoman Mohal, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say, I think the opportunity, um, that we have before us would be well worth this investment, and we don't know how much more RVC is going to do over here. We weren't their first choice, um, for a location, so it cer-
It certainly is, um, you know, a really great opportunity to keep, um, this relationship we have with the RVC, um, you know, growing, and I, I, I really do think it'd be well worth the, the investment. It's, it's, um, a really, um, big opportunity, I think, for Boone County and this city to have, uh, this tech center out here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alderman Fleury?
I agree, having the tech center here has been great. Do we receive any kind of monetary benefits from the ATC being here?
Well, monetary, um, you know, uh, the ATC center here does not generate any sales tax revenue. The ATC se, uh, center would be a taxing body, um, and, uh, I guess you would look at the intangibles of what they provide. You would want to look at, uh, the things that they had mentioned in the letter, that we had talked about, some of the, some of the, um, they're going to have a truck driver training program here, they're going to have a heavy equipment operations training, and, they will bring on, uh, five new, uh, full-time equivalent employees. So, I mean, um, in answer to your question, I guess no, uh, other than the intangibles. And if I'm wrong, somebody correct me.
And I guess the question is, you know, the, the fees go through KIP, and you, you know, made the assumption that KIP would have to do a lot of work, and, you know, I don't know what he has to do either, but, I mean, I think it would be, I think to further this discussion, I think I'd like to have KIP here, or if there's anybody else can speak to it, of the benefit of waiving the fees from the city standpoint of, you know, the ones that are going to be doing the work.
Well, I can speak to that. Uh, you know, KIP, uh, the city has waived fees in the past, and I know KIP has a department to run, and it seems like, uh, he may be on the short, uh, short end of, uh, you know, some of those fees, uh, being, uh, removed. The council has done it before in the past, but I know he's an advocate for his department. You've also heard me talk about, um, expenses, uh, with the city, you've heard me mention that. Uh, so, these would-be expenses that the city would, uh, eat, essentially, and, uh, you know, it would be money, money that we wouldn't have, but yet we would still be doing the work. So, how that computes, uh, to everybody's, uh, degree of fairness, or whether or not that's, uh, that's a good deal, that's certainly, uh, up to anybody who's going to vote here tonight, so. I think, uh, I could speak for KIP, though, and tell you that, uh, we always have a discussion regarding the waiver of fees, and, uh, you know, and I see his, his point of it as well. I think whenever we have future, um, development that brings jobs to the community, I think we try and do that, some of these, some of those are a lot larger, uh, than that. We did not waive any fees out at, uh, some of the, uh, projects, uh, you know, that, uh, we have done, uh, General Mills, uh, we did not, in the Enterprise Zone, they waived 50%, but the city still collected, will collect those as well, out at, uh, Genoa Road, we did not as well. We, uh, there were recapture fees out at Genoa Road that, at one time, the developer who wanted us to waive them, I refused to waive them, and that amounted to $188,000. I think if you're going to make an investment here in the community, I think, uh, we had made an investment in providing, uh, water and sewer out there at that site, and so water and sewer out there at that site, and so I believe those fees were fair. Now whether or not the council believes these are, that's up to you. Alderman Snow?
So generally speaking, we don't, on other units of government, we usually waive those fees. We waive them for other entities like Habitat for Humanity. I realize it's twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand dollars, but in the overall scheme of things, it's going to get built into the whole process of, of his department absorbing that. The, it wasn't a budgeted item, so it wasn't something that was in his ticket item of his income anticipation, so. The, the other thing is, Rock Valley College isn't in the business of making a profit. It is, in lack of another term, a non-for-profit, so it's not like a business that is indeed going to be making money off of their expansion and that, so. I'm in favor of waiving the fee, obviously.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other questions? Alderwoman Mohaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to say the opportunity for our high school students and for both of our high schools, or any of the high schools here, for future partnerships with RVC for heavy equipment operations and the CDL is, you know, really, really beneficial to our students here, and there's, you know, a lot of kids that may look at that opportunity and take advantage of that. I just don't want to see a relationship ruined, and I want them to keep coming back to us, you know, for further expansions.
You know, the RVC is a taxing body, and the school district is a taxing body. We obviously are a taxing body. And so I've heard people say, well, you know, it's a big exchange of money. Taxpayer money goes from one hand, goes from one hand to the other. And in a way, I guess that's true. It does. The bottom line, I guess, is we have to consider that the school district is not waiving any of the fees, you know. School district has a relationship with RVC, but they're asking the city to waive the fees. So I, I guess we keep that one in mind so that, for accuracy. Alderman McGee?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Do we know if, if we don't waive the fee, that this Phase Two will not go forward?
No.
Thank you.
Nope. And as you can see, the letter that I received wasn't quite the one that I'd asked for. I'd asked for something from RVC. This actually is from their architect or engineer. It's on their behalf, but I thought maybe I would get one from RVC. That's not the case here. It is their architect, their engineer. Might have been a misunderstanding on my part, but that's what I, that's what you have in front of you tonight. Okay? Any other discussion? Alderwoman Frank?
I was just going to say, I'm always conservative when it comes to spending. I would like to make a flat fee of ten thousand dollars. They're still getting money, but they're, we're not giving them the whole amount.
Okay?
Was there a motion already?
There was a motion to, was that amendment?
So the first motion was a motion to waive, we can't treat that as a motion to amend, it's a flat fee of ten thousand?
Mm-hmm. Do we have a second on that? No. That motion fails, that amendment fails. Okay, so we're left with the original motion on the floor. And that motion is to waive the anticipated permit fees per building official in the amount of, to the building department, in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And that is after the enterprise zone discount, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fetis, that's fifty, that's the same, the same amount then? Okay. So that's already being, the enterprise zone already allows them to have a advantage of twenty-four thousand, nearly. That's what's before you tonight, if there's no other discussion. All those in favor of waiving those fees, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's have a roll call, roll please.
Sure.
Please.
Mickey?
Nay.
Mohaw?
Aye.
Porter? Out of the room.
Oh, oh.
Braithor?
Nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Five in favor?
Motion pass. Okay, thank you. And?
Now we can come back.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Porter. So we have item G in front of us tonight. Fiscal year 2024 budget discussion. Absolutely. We'll take, say, five minutes, how about that?
Just to warn you, your mics will stay on, so no dead, no drop mic moments.
Yeah.
So I don't know dollar-wise what the new assignment or what the current assignment are for those.
I can certainly look up specific line items if you'd like me to.
Sure. So at this point, I'm going under general expenses, page fifty-four. This will be the economic and business development, under which has the growth dimensions expense.
I think the previous week I gave you those breakdowns that showed it moved from thirty to twenty based on the votes taken that night.
Sure, but it doesn't list it here, so when we're talking about it, it's not going to do us any good. So anyhow, I would like to, realizing that the dollar amount's not there, but increase the growth dimensions back up to the fifty-five thousand that it was originally done. I make that in form of a motion that will increase the thirty, excuse me, eighty-seven thousand four sixty-two number be increased by the appropriate amount to get that back up to fifty-five thousand.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. That would be one hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars, I believe, is that right?
I get one twenty-two four sixty-two.
Yes. One twenty-two four sixty-two. Okay. We have a motion on the second floor then with page fifty-four, line item zero-one dash five dash six-one-zero, zero dash six-eight-four-zero, be increased by thirty-five thousand dollars, which would be reinstating growth dimensions budget from twenty thousand to fifty-five thousand. Any comments? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Wolf and Ms. Sage again for coming out tonight and talking and being in support of growth dimensions, and I think the last time we had the discussion, I think the, the four of us have voted to keep them at fifty-five thousand, I think explained their side very well, and I think that, again, it makes sense to me to not cut our economic growth development place to when we're hurting for revenue, so kind of shortly restating that. But, you know, I would like, that's, you know, my opinion of what I think, but I would like to, maybe not tonight, put you on the spot, but the other five aldermen that said no and want to cut it to twenty thousand, if you could just maybe explain your reasons again. If you don't do it tonight, that's fine, because kind of putting you on the spot, don't want to do that, but if you could kind of explain it, so maybe I can see your point of view, because to me, it doesn't make sense. And when we have people come out to talk about it, you know, there hasn't been anybody at public comment that's, that's spoken against it, not saying that they can't in the future, but we've only heard this in this kind of the same discussion we had last year of why it was important to keep growth dimensions where they're at. So again, I'd like to just hear the, the opposition view, if you're ready to speak tonight, or maybe gather your thoughts and bring it up next time.
All right, Alderman Burton, and then Alderwoman Frank and Alderman Porter. Alderman Burton?
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. I don't mind being put on the spot, but anything that I had to say, I wrote like a three-page essay last year, so if you want to go back to the video and check that out. Thanks.
Alderwoman Frank?
Okay, I'm going to explain this. There was a motion to raise it back to fifty-five thousand, which I thought, I'm not going to go to fifty-five thousand, but I could go lower of the two options, and the reason I went lower was because we're getting double taxed. Because if you live in the city, you're already paying the county, and you're already paying the city, so that's why I went down. But we also are facing all these But we also are facing all these uncertainties, and I'm always the same, I'm always being frugal, I always watch the dollars. If you know, I'm not somebody that says, okay, let's do this, I'm very, very cautious when it comes to money. There was something else I was going to say. Oh, one thing I would like to say to Pam, I do want to apologize to her, because last time I spoke, I said that in the '70s, my family had a business and it was a thriving community, we had all those stores. I was corrected, she does not do retail, she does commercial and industrial, so that, I am sorry, Pam. There's other reasons too, I mean, if I think of them, I'll make sure I tell you.
Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just, my thing is the ambulance thing, we don't know how this is going to go, we're having a huge expense here, and we don't know what's going to happen with Stellantis. So I'm just being cautious here, and I'm thinking that for one year, cutting it back is the right thing to do, just because, let's see how it goes next. I mean, in the next year, we're going to anticipate it into $600,000 from the grant for the ambulance reimbursement. But I think, to be frugal, you know, we should maybe cut back on this for a year and then revisit it next year and see how things are going financially with the city, you know, based on those other two factors.
Alderman McGee?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I had a talk with Pam, and I kind of echoed what Alderman Porter was saying, that with the unknown cost of what Stellantis is going to do and increase with the ambulance, that right now, I don't know if we're in a position to have that extra cost. And she asked me if we would take another look at it down the road, and I relayed to her that I wish it was two years from now, when we started seeing some of these tax dollars coming in from these new projects, I think we'd be in better position, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Stevens?
I've had no outcry from anyone that we're cutting this budget. You know, either the people I've talked to, most of them ask, you know, what is growth dimensions, why are we funding them, they never really hear anything about it. And I've talked to a couple of people that have tried to get information for your stuff, and they've gotten nowhere.
Any other discussion? I, Alderman Snow?
I have had discussions with people that don't have a clue what growth dimensions does, and they all first turn to, well, can't the Chamber of Commerce do it? They're two different, total different entities that service a totally different market, as it were, and that is not what the Chamber does. Growth Dimensions brings in huge amount of investment into this city, and has in the past and continues to do so. And I think you're really making poor decisions, in my opinion.
Alderwoman Moha?
Thank you, Mayor. I think if this budget is cut for growth dimensions, I really am afraid that two years down the road, we're going to look back and say, we missed the boat on a lot of projects that could have brought a lot of revenue to the city. I think it's very concerning if, I don't know how Pam's going to do her job without those funds. And, you know, it's, she pointed out, you know, to hire someone to do this kind of work as a city employee, easily double, double the amount. I don't want to miss out on opportunities for growth unless, you know, we don't want Belvedere to grow, that's a different story. I'd like to see Belvedere continue to grow. I think the mayor and Growth Dimensions has worked really hard to achieve what we have, especially this past year, there's been a lot going on. I think building on this momentum is really, really important. If our city can't invest in our own growth, that's concerning to me. And it is an investment, and I think that investment will pay off. You invest to get something more back, and I want to see that happen for Belvedere.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Prather?
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic growth and development within our community is just as pivotal and necessary as any of the infrastructure that we have here. Their main focus is to bring jobs and opportunities into this area by bringing these companies into the area, and being the go-to, and helping them in these transitions. And again, what we're proposing, if I'm remembering the figure correctly, was a 63% or 67% decrease in funding to our economic development. I think, I echo Mr. Wolf's statements, and that's sending a huge statement to the other investors. And if we're not willing to invest in jobs for our own citizens, why should they? If we don't have, if we don't have people living here to be the workforce, it's not going to have the people coming in to do the investments. I mean, it would be, I think, devastating to the city of Belvedere to make this decision to decrease their funding. And I echo what Alderman Flurry said in, you know, why, why? It doesn't make any sense. So I really feel like members of this council are basing their decisions on their own personal opinions and their own personal biases, and not necessarily what is in the best long-term interest and future for the city.
Alderwoman Frank?
Well, every government faces the problem where you spend, but you don't cut, and that's where we're trying to do, we're trying to make some cuts. And I'm not doing it to be mean, I don't have ulterior motives, I don't have an agenda, it's always with me, cut if we can. And yes, I realize that it's important, but right now is not the good time.
Alderwoman Flurry? I'm sorry, Alderwoman Prather?
So every year when this comes up, we talk about cutting funds to growth dimensions, but yet I hear no other information from anybody on other areas to cut. But every year, this, no, I'm not picking on you, Wendy. So if we have other areas that we can cut our budget, what are these areas that we can cut our budgets? You know, here's one, how about the facade grant funding? Why don't we, why don't we suspend that for a year and come back to it? Is that going to have any devastating effects on our community to forego that? Shannon, how much is the facade grant funding?
Well...
I believe it's 5% of the gaming revenue from the previous year we put towards that.
Do we have those figures, and is there anything that says legally we can't forego the grant funding for that?
Well, you know, I think we're getting on the weeds here, and we have...
Oh, no, I don't think we are.
Excuse me?
I don't think we are getting on the weeds.
Well, I think we are, because we have a motion and a second on the floor right now, specifically just to increase the budget amount from 20,000 to 55,000.
No, and I...
And let me just finish, I just gave the council a proposal to save, what was it, 20, $25,000, $24,000? And they passed on that one. And, oh, wait a minute. And so if it's about funding, which it is, and I do want to say this, never in the history of Belvedere have we had an opportunity to lose an auto manufacturing plant here, hopefully we don't, but it is an unknown. Never, not in the last 57 years. Now, we've had layoffs, and we've had where they've retooled, and we've even had one incident where they took a billion dollars from the federal government so that the CEO could turn the company right side up. However, right now, it's my understanding, at least in my discussions with the state, with the feds, and with Stellantis, that they've decided to indefinitely idle that plant. And what that means for the city of Belvedere, I think I've tried to explain that regarding, that's our largest user of water. When Brent had given us the water rate study that showed us 16th out of northern Illinois communities, there's a reason that we are that. That is potentially up in the air. As a reminder, we have a paramedic issue here that's, we haven't dealt with in 20 years, we've never dealt with anything. We never had services that Lifeline had provided to the community to make sure that residents had transport with ALS care. And years and years ago, the city had passed on doing that, and giving that contract, had given that contract to Lifeline because of the expense. Now, as you recall, we have a million-dollar shortfall. So we're not talking about just some money here or there, we're talking about what we know is going to be a huge deficit for the city's finances. And, I'm not finished, please? We also have two wells that are down. We have wells three and four. Those are not pumping water, we've had to shut those wells. Do we like it? No, we don't. Is it an unknown? Well, not quite, I mean, it's going to be millions of dollars, 5 million, I believe, and Brent, correct me, I don't know, it may be more, the price tag on that, but we are going to have to pay for that well. And we have our sanitary sewer project. As I had mentioned earlier today, the residents were here, and they had asked the city to invest in a $45 million project that was going to be a lifelong commitment, really, that there was, I don't think there would ever be a sunset on that. The council wisely, I believe, they passed on that. With that, we also promised that we would make a commitment to residents, the taxpayers. Those taxpayers, that we would try and solve that issue, those taxpayers are who I work for, who we work for. We're arguing about somebody else's money here. This is their money. This isn't somebody else's money, this is their money. Now, whether or not we, Growth Dimensions, I think, has had $55,000 from the city for, I don't know how many years, six or seven, I think, running. And the county had contributed 15,000. I think the comment was made earlier tonight that there's a little double dipping that maybe, that we may be doing. Now, I'm all for it, I cut, I cut that budget, when I did the budget, I cut it from 55 to 30. And I did that because I thought it was prudent to do. And I think with all the unknowns regarding our sanitary plant, regarding our storm sewer trunk, regarding the well, regarding the paramedic issue, and regarding Stellantis, I would say we've got a plate full of unknowns. But I will say that it isn't a permanent cut. I think what's being proposed here is not a permanent cut. But at some point or other, the city is going to have to have a budget that we are going to have to maintain, and that we are going to have to live with. Now, I'd made the comment last week that our employees are vulnerable as well. Do we cut employees without trying to cut somewhere else in our budget? Do we do that? Is that what we do? I don't think so. I don't think that's what we want to do, I don't think that's fair. Do I believe that Growth Dimensions provides a great service? Of course, I do. Would I like to have them all? Would I'd like to have all these other intangibles cleared up? I would. This is not the best time to be sitting up here in this chair trying to work out a budget and trying to make sure we try and prioritize what everybody else feels is a priority. I will, I have checked, Loves Park pays their economic development, for their economic development, $25,000. But Chesney Park pays $12,500. So when we look at this, all I'm saying is that we tried to put together a budget, am I grateful? I have always said that Growth Dimensions had help, was tremendous help. This is a new year, this is a new, these aren't things that I've ever, I don't think the council ever anticipated, and I certainly have not either. So, you know, with Rock Valley College, that was a good opportunity to potentially not do work for free and throw, I mean, that's essential revenue, that's money that taxing body has decided that, you know, they're not going to give us for work that we do. That's nice, but they do have a revenue stream. So, you know, I mean, it's one thing to say, yeah, we think this and we think that, I don't know, you know, what the future holds, but I do know that we have funded much, much more than the county, 55 to 15, for a number of years. And they raised theirs this year from 15 to 30, is what they did. Was that prudent on their part? Well, it makes, it makes it better for us, I think. But what I had done, when I had put this in the budget, I had reduced it from 55 to 30. And so I want to be clear that we have a lot of unknowns. If I had all the answers, I'd certainly tell you, but I don't, because I don't think anybody does. Nobody knows what is going to happen with some of these issues. There's matching grants that we've applied for, we've applied for the sanitary sewer project, 1.9 million. Would I love to get that? You bet I would. Is it going to cost us money, thousands of dollars, just to get the engineering work done? And then, when you go ahead and also figure that it's, there's going to be a match, we're going to have to match, I would love to have 80% for 20%, but a million nine, $2 million is 400,000 to be able to take advantage of that grant. It's not like we're flush with cash here. So I think we need to keep it in perspective, I'm not asking, I don't think the council's asking for anybody's firstborn here, I don't think this is permanent. But at some point, I'm asking, the council, consider whose money it is they're spending. Who do you work for? I work for the taxpayers. I believe that we will get around this. But I also believe we have to be very prudent, and that's all I'm asking. So whatever the council does, decides to do this, I think they need to consider that it sounds good, everybody wants to be friendly, and everybody wants to have a friend, what have you, and that's fine. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be prudent with taxpayer money, that's taxpayer money, it's not our money, it's their money, so. Alderwoman Prather?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to note that I did vote against the Rock Valley thing, and I do stand by all of my statements as far as I think it would be a huge mistake to cut that funding for growth dimensions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion then on the floor to increase the line item of 01-5-610-6840 from $87,462 to $122,462, an increase of $35,000. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls roll, please.
Moha?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Mickey?
Nay.
Who are in favor?
Motion's lost. Okay. Any other discussion? Alderman Snow?
I'm going to use your microphone, please, so people can hear it.
I'm looking for the page that has RMAP on it. I wanted to find out exactly what do we get from RMAP and can we defund that? We do not have the dollar amount associated with it.
So, RMAP, I believe we pay, actually, about 12 or 13,000 a year, I think, just for budgeting purposes. I assumed a 5% increase, not knowing what they're going to do, because we don't know that until we get the bill for the next fiscal year.
And what does RMAP do for us? And what is it?
Well, I think the funding, historically, and Brent, you might correct me if I'm wrong, regarding some of the project funding that was designated by the state. And now, we're dependent upon obtaining our funding other ways.
Correct. So, some of the federal allotments that we used to receive, funding for transportation projects, STBG funds and other federal funds, is when we were, when we were by ourselves, standalone, we used to get that money direct from the state. That's no longer the case, because we've grown big enough and Rockford expanded to the area so that we're one big metropolitan planning group. So we're basically required through US Department of Transportation, Illinois Department of Transportation, be part of the R1 Planning Group. And as such, they control some of the funds that we used to get direct. So, as you will be coming up here, we've made an application for STBG funds. Well, we got, we've got awarded funding for Newburgh Road overlays. That's coming through R1. Again, that they, they monitor, administer on our behalf. So there are some requirements, requirements that we are part of that planning organization.
Continue.
And so, we need to be part of it, but do we have to give 13,000? Can we give 1,000?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I'd make a motion to reduce that to 1,000.
Well, I think, you know, that in order to be a member of them, like with the other surrounding communities that we have, and I think it's important to note that some of the funding, we don't have any other funding, other way to go get funding mechanism. We rely on them. Actually, they were brought into place, into play by really the state to make sure that some of the smaller communities that were advocating for project, for projects, that they got a fair shake, that we got a fair shake. That's the only way that we're represented. We, they do have dues that we pay for. This is, and this has been paid long before I've been, I've come on the council. So Alderman Snow, you should realize, if I would have known this question was going to be coming regarding this, if you'd have gave me a heads up, I'd have went and got my file and I could have gone over this for you ahead of time. But we pay RMAP to represent the city of Belvidere regarding funding. That's our funding spokesman. And they make sure that the funds are put in for, and they also make sure that they're allocated fairly for some of the communities. What hap, what, the reason they were brought into, into play was because Rockford, historically, being a larger community, had always got all the unfair funding. And so, they were brought in, not by me, not by the council, they were brought in by the state to be able to ensure that the funding mechanism was fair. So I'm not sure, you know, if that's what you want to do. Is that, is that what you want to do?
Do we get invoice?
Pardon me?
Do we get an invoice for that amount?
We do.
Or do we just pay them?
No, no. We, no. I will clue you in on this. Before I got here, we did not get an invoice, no. I made sure that we asked for an invoice, because I didn't know what we were paying for, neither did you. And so, yes, we do get invoice now. They never got invoiced, it's my understanding before. Ms. Hanson?
We do get invoice quarterly, and we are currently paying 14,720, 25.
And if, if you want to, I can, you know, if you call me, I certainly would have been more than happy to share with you some of the funding mechanisms that we rely on them to, to give them, give us. And actually, that's the only, only way that we have to try and advocate or try to apply for them. And they make sure that nobody is getting an unfair portion of the, of the funds. And, yeah.
And on that note, they advocate for us, just like Growth Dimensions advocates for us to get business and tax dollars ultimately. So just tossing that out there.
Yeah. And as I had said, as I, as I had said, you know, I fully understand that. I, I think there's a difference, and the difference being that with this, we have to be a member of RMAP. I mean, we don't have any other alternative. We have an opportunity here, at least to weather the storm until we find out what our situation is going to be, I think. To me, it's a prudent thing to do. I, quite frankly, I can't believe I'm arguing with people over taxpayer money on what, on whether or not we're going to try and save them money. Now, I understand that in the long term, that may not be wise, but I don't think we're talking about the long term. I'm just asking you to bear with us or with me, at least until I can get a better read on some of the unknowns that we have. That's it. And so, to me, it's not apples and apples, it's apples and oranges, Alderman Snow. But, you know, I mean, I respect, you know, it's your opinion, I, that's fine. But anyhow, anything else? Alderman Porter?
Okay, I have a little trouble here. Need to drink water, but I'd like to revisit the Exhibit B salary for the Budget and Finance Officer that we voted on. I feel, after having conversations with the mayor and with Shannon, I feel that she is very well qualified for the position, and she's doing a really good job. And we've seen that in a number of grants that have come through, through her office and all the grant writing. And I really do feel that she does deserve the, the raise that we proposed, proposed originally. So I'd like to revisit that. And I'd like to kind of remind somebody, or remind people that, for some of the Aldermen weren't here, the previous administration missed a very important date on a grant at one point, which cost, basically led to losing a $28 million stormwater grant. So that's just some food for thought. Ended up going to another city. But I just feel that she does deserve the raise, and she's a city employee, as opposed to, we're talking about community development, you know, they're, they're not city employees either, so it's not, it's like apples and oranges. I know that there were some comparisons made there, but anyway, I'd like to make a motion to go back to the original raise that we talked about, the 7128. And, and I'd like to make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion. I don't know what that, I don't even recall what that original amount was. I know the 71, what was the original motion? Or what was the original?
The original amount was 92,000.
92,000. Okay. So an increase back of 71, what'd you say?
It was a 3% plus 7128.
3% plus 7128. Alderman Porter?
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I think that's very important, that we have a strong financial director that's going to, that we're going to need to lead us through these times, you know, with what's going on with the, the ambulance service and the Stellantis questions. And also, Alderman Snow, I believe it was, brought up something which I also have checked into, looking at the comparables that we have on our desk here. We would have to pay probably around 132,000 to, to replace her, comparing her salary to a lot of these other cities that are about the same size. I think that asking for the 92 is reasonable, and I think it's an appropriate amount. So, just think about, you know, if she needs to be replaced at some point, we're going to end up paying a lot more money.
Thank you, Alderman Porter. So, was that in a form of a motion then? Okay. A motion by Alderman Porter. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Stevens. And discussion. Alderman Flurry?
Again, nothing personal, Shannon. You are, are in fact doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate Alderman Porter for getting out the comparables to other finance directors in the area. But like I made the point last time, if we lost Chief Woody, or Chief Shadle, or our Public Works Director, we'd have to pay a considerable amount more to replace them. So I think some of the benefits of working in Belvidere is because we care for our community, and we're all dedicated to our citizens, we're dedicated to our city, and we're willing to work for a little bit less to make sure that we can do great things here in our city. So we can take care of our taxpayers. So, again, when we've had this long discussion that should mostly stay professional, sometimes becomes personal, I don't know how we can argue that with all this unknowns coming, we're going to raise some individual's salary 7,000. Do you deserve 7,000, Shannon? Sure. You probably deserve 45,000, but it's not in the budget. And I would give an increase to those chiefs over there and to our Public Works Director who goes way above and beyond trying to find the cheapest way to do things and looking in Oklahoma to get a truck for us to save us $5. I mean, you know, all these things add up, and obviously, it was bigger savings than that, sorry Brent. Huge savings to us. So, again, it's not a matter of merit of who deserves a raise or who doesn't, or who's not doing the right job. All the city employers are doing a fantastic job. And if it was feasible in our budget, and hopefully in years to come, when, you know, our city's booming again and the economy's booming, I think it would be prudent to give everybody raises to kind of catch up for this gap, so we don't lose great talent to other cities. But in our current state of economics, when things are uncertain, I think that at this point, not a no forever, but this year, I don't think it makes sense to do that. So I'm still going to vote no. And again, nothing personal, Shannon, I think you do deserve it, I just don't think in this budget, it's a good idea.
Anybody else? Alderwoman, Frank?
Well, I do agree with Alderman Flurry about paying this much in a raise when we're trying to cut other costs. But she also does work on a lot of grants, and she does help Director Anderson. I would not go this high. I would make, my original amendment was before, was 2,000 plus, or the 2,000 plus the 3,000, or was it 3 plus the 2? That would be half. I could see that. Because I, I cannot, I agree with Alderman Flurry, I can't do that.
Yes, and just a reminder to go back, I know it's different budgets, but it was just, I think, a year ago that the clerk was trying to get Abby a raise. She cut, within her own department, cut money, had money available to then give to her, and we said no, because this person's already making 32,000 a year, and that's plenty of money. So if that was the argument a year ago, I just don't see, this is money that's not allocated in the budget, it would have to come from somewhere else. So, again, I think that this year isn't the time to do raises, not 1%, not 2%, over what everyone else is getting. We're already doing across the board 3%, which I think is reasonable, and probably under what the folks that are on this whole salary be deserve, but I think it's a reasonable amount considering our economic standpoint right now.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I will say this, that our former finance director, if she were to have remained, she would be at a salary of 90,826. That would be what her salary is. Actually, the 93,000 is budgeted. It is in the budget. And so, I will tell you this, that, and I don't, I'm not embarrassed to tell anybody this, that the level of work that we have now compared to what we had prior, I think is, the difference is, is amazing to me. I think we've had grants that were written to go out and, you know, get funding, that I think Alderman Porter had mentioned before, we had lost opportunity on that. We haven't lost any opportunities. And it certainly makes us be able to afford projects that otherwise we just wouldn't have. But when you put, when you talk about what you would have been paying now if we didn't have any change in the past, then you would be talking about 90,826, and that's where the 92,000 came from. So, you know, I think, you know, it's not a 20, you're not talking about 55 to 20, you're not talking about 35,000 here. You're talking about actually somebody who's done a magnificent job and who has obtained grants. I know you pointed out that there's other department heads that are maybe undercompensated. I don't, I don't dispute that at all. I think we have a great administrative staff, but I do think that an individual who is in charge of a $20 million-plus budget and all the responsibilities that go out to help the city, help the taxpayers with that, I think there are no way, the disparity is great. I think if you look at our department heads across the board, there's a huge disparity there. And this isn't asking to come up to anywhere near that. This is just asking to reward somebody that has done a great job, saved the taxpayers a lot of money. And so, when you look at, also, I think in your packet, there was a comparable, I don't know if anybody brought this, but talked about this, but the village of Machesney Park pays their finance director 135,000. So, at one time, when I had hired for this position, I'd hired this position low. And as I had said, some Aldermen wanted to hire it for just the amount of money that you see on the information before you tonight. And that was, what, two years ago? So, we're not talking about that kind of money. We're talking about, not 135,000, we're talking about, what, 92,000? So, it's a bargain at any price. I would hate to have to try and fill that position. As I had said before, I'll be coming back to the same council members, and I will be telling you that we're going to pay, we're not going to find anybody for that kind of money. And I think the comparables bear that out. So, you know, I don't think that you use this as a tool to try and like, you know, hold one over the other. They're not the same. They're not the same. You're talking about an employee here that comes in every day. This employee doesn't have any, you realize, don't you? There's no backup here. She doesn't have an assistant. There's no assistant here. You know, what you just cut here earlier today, there's three individuals at, at Growth Dimensions. And that was one of the reasons why I thought it was prudent that we could reduce that amount. Our finance department consists really of one individual. That's it. So, I mean, I, you know, the comparables speak for themselves, but certainly the council, they'll be heard when we vote. So, any other discussion? Alderman Porter?
Well, I just want to point out, I see here, like Wakanda, which is a city I'm familiar with, is a smaller city than Belvidere, they pay their finance director 137.5, so, you know, just food for thought. and thirty-seven five, so, you know, just food, food for thought.
Okay, thank you. You know, I could, I could advocate here for any of the department heads, any of them, and I could go right down the line. Gina, Chief Woody, Chief Shadle, Brent Anderson, I've said this before, you know, they're invaluable. They are. When you look at the pay scale of, of these positions, there is a disparity on one of them. And that one happens to be in control of their budget, and their budget, and their budget, and his budget. And so, you know, I think you gotta, I think you get what you pay for, but this certainly will not, like I said, this was put in there, because for two years, I had decided that I would wait and see how that worked out. And I will tell you, the city's in a much, much better financial position now and in the future, because of Ms. Hanson. So, and I, I have no shame in saying that. So, this is council decision. Any other comments? All right. So, we have a motion on the floor then, to increase the finance director's salary by seventy-one hundred and, was it twenty-six? Twenty-eight?
It's the three percent plus seventy-one twenty-eight.
Okay. Three percent plus seventy-one twenty-eight, which is, is that ninety-two? To ninety-two thousand? Is there any other, any other debate? Hearing none, all those in favor will vote aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Nay.
Who are in favor?
Motion's lost. Okay. Any other discussion regarding the budget?
Yes.
Alderman Frank?
I would like to make an amendment to that. I would like it to be the two, two, her three percent plus two thousand dollars.
It's a new motion, okay?
It's a motion.
It's a new motion, so I don't know what that, uh, the...
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Uh, three percent in, plus two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it should be eighty-six, eight seventy-two.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor for, to increase that to the amount of eighty-six thousand eight seventy-two, which would be three percent plus two thousand dollars, correct? There's a motion, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Burton. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Yes.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Five in favor?
Okay. Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, is there any other line items that anybody wants to address? Alderman Frank?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I don't have the line item, but I was thinking along with what another Alderman said two weeks ago, that we should cut some things, and mine was for, like, when we go to Growth Dimensions and dinners and things, that the Aldermen should pay half their way. It'd be a free, free dinner for everybody.
So, I think the only, under fifty-one fifty-four memberships, meetings and conferences, we do have Belvidere Chamber Annual Dinner, which we have eighteen hundred in the budget right now. I don't believe we pay for the Growth Dimensions Dinner, I think that's part of our membership.
That's probably what I meant, because I had it underlined. Sorry.
I, I believe that's the only place we have a dinner in the budget.
And the problem with cutting that, I think that's, you buy a table.
Correct.
Um, so, I don't know how you do a partial table or reduce that.
Well, could the city pay for the ticket, or the table, and then the Aldermen go pay for half their ticket? That's how we did it.
Well, I, I could. My, my problem is, is that a lot of times our table, we don't have enough people to go to the table. So, I try and, you know, I try and support our Growth Dimensions downtown, because, you know, I go, and, but I'd be more than happy to pay, you know, out of my pocket, a ticket, for a ticket. But sometimes I think we have a hard time getting people to go, and then I kind of look at somebody, and then I guess I feel guilty, so.
And that wouldn't change the budget amount, you stop the budget it, and then later on, show it up as an income line item.
All right, I withdraw that.
If Alderman chose to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I understand, you know, I understand, I understand your, your motion, and I get it. You know, Growth Dimension, or, excuse me, the Chamber, they have, you know, I guess their focus is really the downtown, and I think, you know, I understand how important the downtown is, we want to try and have businesses, you know, thrive or come into our downtown, we don't want, we don't want them boarded up. So, I think they advocate, to me, they advocate on behalf of, you know, the down, strictly the downtown, it's not a lot of...
No, it's nothing against them.
Oh, I understand.
It's just saying that we are elected, we get, we get paid, we get compensated, so that, I think that we should be able to pay for our own, but I'm just going to withdraw that completely.
And I think there was a comment made last week, that, you know, a couple Aldermen had talked about, you know, donating their salary to, for a cause here, and my point is, you don't have to donate anything, you can just write a check. So, if, moving forward, if, you know, we have individuals on the council want to go to the Chamber Dinner, and they want to write a check back to the city, we'll, we'll take it, so. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Hearing nothing else, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Prather. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned at nine seventeen PM. Thank you, everybody.